Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today's date is March 9, 2021, and this meeting is hereby called to order. At this time, I will ask our clerk if she will please call the roll and establish quorum.
Yes, good morning. Supervisors Desmond.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, March 12 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUB Radio on 96.5 FM, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to please ask my colleague Supervisor Serna if you would be so kind to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Honored.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Serna.
I want to open today's meeting by acknowledging that yesterday was International Women's Day, and March is Women's History Month. For anyone not familiar, we had our first International Women's Day in 1909 as part of the emerging women's suffrage movement. Since that time, we've been seeing women gain the right to vote, protections against discrimination put in place. We've seen the swearing in of our first woman vice president in the United States. And here in the county, we don't have to look far to find inspiring women. We have Ann Edwards, who is our interim county executive and formerly head of our Department of Human Assistance. Florence Evans, our clerk of the board, who keeps our meetings running so smoothly and does so with predominantly women or female staff. Lisa Travis, our brilliant county council. And of course, to provide an update for us on our COVID-19 pandemic, we'll be having our public health officer, Dr. Cassiri, at the podium shortly. I want to thank all the women in the county for the work that you do. I want to thank them for their ability to inspire future generations. And I want to recognize all women who came before us, who recently, most recently Supervisor Susan Peters, my predecessor, Supervisor Roberta McGlashan, also my predecessor. So many women throughout history have accomplished so much. They've shattered the glass ceiling after glass ceiling, and I'm honored to have those women around us as part of that story. So congratulations, and as we begin Women's History Month. I also wanted to especially acknowledge Dr. Cassiri, who was recently honored for a special recognition award with the Sierra Sacramento Valley Medical Society. I was in attendance. I know Supervisor Serna was there, and I think there may have been other supervisors there as well for an amazing event that recognized some of the public health officers in the county for the work that they have done during a very difficult time. There's a lot of political pressure around a lot of the work that they're doing, and it takes courage. And I just wanted to make a comment about courage. Courage is not the absence of fear, it's the ability to walk through it. And it's not always easy to stand up for what you believe, but that's the wonderful thing about America. We can have discourse and come up with great ideas and better solutions because of it. So I want to especially acknowledge Dr. Cassiri for her work and for the path that she's taken with the county of Sacramento, and for all the help that she's given to all of us in our districts. And congratulations on that special recognition. You deserve it. And I, at this time, have our chair's meeting announcement, which I will read.
No, ma'am chair.
I'm sorry. I'm still trying to learn how to pay attention. So Supervisor Natoli, thank God I have Supervisor Natoli and Serna keeping me on task almost every meeting, and I appreciate it. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, well, thank you, Chair. Just wanted to, as you were acknowledging folks in Women's History Month, I certainly wanted to acknowledge you as our current chairperson here at the Board of Supervisors. And you mentioned some of those who had served on this board previously, Supervisor McGlashan and Peters. But I also wanted to call out Supervisor Sandy Smolli, Supervisor Isla Collin, Supervisor Muriel Johnson.
Thank you, yes.
All who served on this board. And I've had the, certainly as many of you have, had the honor certainly of knowing them and working with them in their capacity here as elected officials. But I think, as you acknowledged, the leadership of women certainly in the county structure, but certainly in this county, is very, very important. So I just wanted to make note of that. Thanks. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, I'll join Supervisor Natoli certainly in recognizing you. And I'm glad that you, as Chair, Supervisor Frost, have acknowledged the importance of not just yesterday, which was International Women's Day, but the entire month of March as Women's History Month. I do want to, I think it's appropriate to remind our viewers and our constituents that last year, this board adopted a new advisory body that is going to stay focused on issues important to women and girls here in Sacramento County. We're going to have our first-ever commission on the status of women and girls here in Sacramento County. And I'm looking forward to their good work in the years to come. But I think the fact that we'll have that new advisory capacity speaks volumes to the fact that we just don't consider the importance of women in the context of county service and governance, and certainly across all spectrums of activity in our society. But that we recognize that there are unique challenges associated with that particular gender, and we're very serious here in Sacramento County about making sure that it is formally recognized and taken into consideration when we consider policymaking and resource allocation. So again, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the fact that we do have that new capacity on the horizon.
Thank you, yes. We're excited to see the work that they do. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, this meeting is livestream and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment in today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500, and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is greatly appreciated. When I open public comments for a specific agenda item or an off-agenda matter, clerk staff will begin transferring you into the meeting. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please mind, be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected when making more than one public comment on a single agenda item or off-agenda matter. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding. Written comments are always accepted. Send your email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you again for your patience. And now I'll ask our clerk to please read our first item.
Okay, let me just grab this. These are the department heads. Okay, for your consent matters, this is items 1 through 28. I do have a title correction on item 21. Just want to make note that for the amendment to the transportation mitigation strategy for the Jackson Corridor development projects, that the environmental document is exempt. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. And Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple items I'd like to just comment on, certainly leave them on the consent calendar. First would be item 9.
Item 9 is the authority to amend and increase the expenditure contract with Area for Agency on Aging in the amount of $822,058 to extend the Dine at Home Sacramento program during the COVID-19 pandemic.
First, I want to send thanks to certainly Bruce Wagstaff and Michelle Caías, and all of our county staff, and the staff of Area for Agency on Aging for, one, bringing the program forward over nine, almost 10 months ago now, and also for the effort to continue as we've received additional COVID relief funding to keep the program in place and modify it as necessary. I just wanted to note that, as pointed out in the staff report, you know, there have been tens of thousands of meals delivered to folks who, for many months, were living under stay-at-home orders and emergency orders. But also folks who I think we've identified through this process who would qualify, most likely for meals on wheels and other assistance even after the pandemic is over, which we all hope it will be soon. And so I guess I just would ask, recently, you and I had a chance to talk on the phone, that we get the dine-in program, and this was our foray, and certainly a very positive one, into, you know, helping folks on the order of magnitude of, you know, probably close to 1,000 individuals. And as I told you, I've heard some, you know, comments from folks that were very, very positive about it, and folks who may, even if they have the financial capacity, extend, I think, the home-delivered meals through some of the folks that we contracted through even after the pandemic has ended or we terminate this program. But I wanted to ask if we could have a report to know how we're going to transition to folks who are in need, and we may not know that yet, but I think that would be important because this will extend this program through April 30th. We may have another tranche of this, I don't know. But we still have close to 600 individuals, and we talk about the vaccine and making people, you know, have more ability to sustain themselves and to go outside their homes or to, you know, to kind of resume some normal activities. On the other hand, people that are frail or vulnerable, or certainly vulnerable when it comes to essential dietary needs, I think it's really important that we have a plan, and that may not come without a cost. And so I guess I'd like to, you know, make sure that we can have some report back on that at some juncture.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. But thanks again for all the, you know, work and leadership on this item. So those are the comments I had. I've gotten very positive feedback. I trust the other members of this board, from both restaurateurs, but certainly folks that have received the assistance.
Thank you.
Good food and good service, so. And then I also had just a question on item 11.
Okay. Item 11 is the authority to execute an agreement with Child Action in an amount not to exceed 1 million to distribute one-time assistance payments to childcare providers in Sacramento County.
This, again, is a result, obviously, of staff work and board authorization to assist childcare providers, who, again, have been really critical to keeping things going during the pandemic. What I saw in the report is that they're looking to offer up to 2,000, but I guess between $1,000 and $2,000 grants to providers. And I guess I'm curious, I know Child Action has, you know, probably a good list of folks who are eligible providers, but is that all-inclusive in, are there, how are we going to get the word out to folks? Is there small providers or in-home providers that, you know, may only have, may have less than what the state license to recall for, so maybe they're doing one or two kids, but certainly providing an important service? So what sort of outreach are they going to do to make sure that we can reach as many folks as possible?
This is a key part of it Supervisor, as you can imagine. So DHA is working very closely with Child Action to get the word out to their network of providers so that there's awareness of this. That's been a key part of their preparatory work on this. And I can give you more feedback later in terms of the response to that.
Any idea what they've identified as potential number of providers? Is it on the order of magnitude of thousands, or is it?
I'd have to get back with you on that Supervisor. I'm not exactly sure of the number, but I can certainly do that.
Because, you know, I think we might want to reach out to our cities. Some of these folks may have business licenses, but, you know, childcare is provided throughout the county, both in, you know, urban and suburban settings, but even the rural settings. And I, you know, on a first-come, first-served basis, one you got to know about it before you can even apply for it, obviously, and then, you know, hopefully they would qualify. So I guess I would just ask, and I have confidence in Child Action. That's not my point here, is I just want to be sure as we, you know, make these dollars available, that we have a, you know, a process that, you know, does as much outreach as possible. And I would think that, you know, whether it's in Citrus Heights, or Iltin, or Galt, or Folsom, or Munchadoa, or Elk Grove, or City of Sacramento, that those folks may have some idea as well that could assist Child Action in this regard. So I just would ask that we could.
Thank you. Will do. Thank you.
Okay.
Agree. The child, in-home childcare providers are more than fell through the cracks. They were deemed essential, and yet their business was cut off. So this is really good, what we're doing.
Right, right. So, and then lastly, if I could, Madam Clerk, very quickly, item 13.
Okay. Item 13, retroactive authorization to apply for and accept if awarded fiscal year 2021-22 boating, safety, and enforcement financial aid program funding in the anticipated amount of $406,236 from the California Department of Parks and Recreation, Division of Boating and Waterways, and authorization to participate in the program.
Okay. Again, I support this. I just wanted to call out the criticality of this program, what it means certainly throughout the year for the marine enforcement detail that provides a variety of services and certainly responses to everything from theft of vessels to boating-related accidents and even deaths, but also, you know, assistance and recovery of folks who, you know, may be victims of drowning. And they help with some of the inspections and enforcement. I'm particularly familiar with it in the Delta, but I know they will, you know, with the Sacramento River and the American River as well. And I just wanted to note this because it requires the county match. We are, the match in the sense that we have to allocate at least what we receive in unsecured property taxes on boats and vessels. And not knowing what we're going to be looking at budgetarily-wise, that's about $310,000 on our side of the equation. It's not a formal match for the 406, and yet the program costs about $1 million. I just wanted to stress that this is a very important program, quality of life. And I know it's important to certainly some of our business people, but people who recreate in the Delta, but also along the American and Sacramento Rivers outside of the Delta. And I just wanted to stress that because, again, I support this. We've had this grant for many years. It allows us to deal with some of the abandoned vessels and some of the waterways, which have become hazards in our, not just aesthetically problems, but there are actual hazards for folks that, you know, are enjoying the waterways. So just wanted to note this because there's a property tax allocation, and within the scope of things, as we talk about, you know, budget in the months to come, I just wanted to note this. This is a very important aspect. It's a small increment of what we do, certainly enforcement-wise, but also in assisting folks. But it's very important to life in the Delta, but certainly along the waterways, which we're so fortunate to have here. So just wanted to note that. That's all I have. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pull item 22 off of the agenda and then have a discussion about that. Talked with Doug Sloan about it briefly yesterday and let him know I was going to ask to pull this off. So, and then item number 24, I had some questions about, so.
If the clerk would read item 22.
Okay. Item 22 is the authority to execute a retroactive amendment to a contract to increase compensation and extend term for the lease of two loaders for use at the North Area Recovery Station in a retroactive amendment agreement to increase compensation and extend the term for the lease of one loader at the Kiefer landfill with Holt of California.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Clerk. So my question on this, I was looking at these two contracts, and specifically the first one, 34798, that 48-month term, $884,000. And I have some big concerns. I mean, I certainly understand the request to extend the lease term, but it looks like there's some unusual expenses in the amount of about $609,000. And I'd like some more information about what those expenses are, because it's my understanding that the original lease included, you know, regular maintenance and repairs in the normal course of business. So what were those $609,000 in additional expenses on that one loader?
So Doug Sloan, Director with Waste Management and Recycling, we changed over to a full-maintenance lease at the landfill back in 2011, 2012. And we really did it for the uptime, the runtime on equipment. If you look at the lease cost and all the repair costs and the damage, and you look at the purchase cost for equipment, those two, our expenditure is about the same. Frankly, we've, it's been very successful out at the landfill. This lease that we're talking about is the first lease that we did at NARS. And NARS is a different environment. We underestimated the amount of maintenance that we would incur over the four years. We also didn't realize the environment that we were in. So we incurred more damage on the, we do incur more damage, I should say, on the equipment that we have at NARS. The other piece that we underestimated, and I don't know that we had a glass dome to look at this, but we handled 300,000 more tons over the four years than we expected. That additional tonnage in a very small space, confined spaces, drove up our maintenance costs. If we're running the equipment more, it did drive up the equipment cost, it did drive up the damage cost. When staff looked at this contract and realized we needed to extend it first because of the term, we went back and did an analysis of a loader versus a loader that we purchased with maintenance and a loader that we, through the lease program. And we came up with an analysis that we spend, as a department, about $15,000 difference between the total cost for lease and the total cost for purchase, when you look at it. So again, the lease program isn't really designed, it's not designed to save us any money, it's really designed on the uptime. And the best example I have of that, we lost an engine on a piece of leased equipment at the landfill. The vendor came out in the dirt, changed out the engine in five days, and we had the piece of equipment up and running. Our previous experience with that would have been, the equipment would have been down for two to three, four months.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I mean, I understand you make the evaluation about whether it's more cost-effective to lease or to purchase. I mean, this just, my attention was drawn to this, Doug, because obviously this is getting a lot of scrutiny from this board right now.
Yes.
And it directly correlates to the amount of rates we need to pass on to our constituents, almost all of my constituents, frankly. And I still, I feel like your explanation still doesn't explain what the heck that $609,000 was. I mean, that's almost double what the original lease was. And I guess maybe you could break it down to me. I mean, those, you know, what maintenance costs are included in that lease that were exceeded to the tune of $609,000? I mean, unfortunately. I'm not seeing a justification for that. And you mentioned that, you know, it was used a lot more. Okay, I mean, if that's, if that's the case, then why wouldn't we have seen a corresponding increase with the other piece of equipment, right? If we're just talking about additional hours in service, you know, it seems to me both pieces of equipment would have required additional maintenance. I'm not saying that I want you to ask for more money to offset things, but I'm just wondering if something happened with that piece of equipment. And I know it's relative, in the big scheme of things, $600,000 is not a lot of money, but it is when we're passing money on to the ratepayers.
Supervisor Desmond, if I could maybe add a couple of comments. The loader that's used at NARS ends up running on top of the refuse that's being basically deposited by the various customers. So it's traveling over a lot of things that can get up in there and tear hydraulics and do damage to the equipment, whereas at Kiefer landfill, it's running on dirt and pushing the refuse material into the cells that it needs to push that in. So the one cause of a significantly higher amount of maintenance and repair was because of the, as Doug mentioned, there's a difference in the environment of NARS and Kiefer. In NARS, the equipment's just running over all kinds of things, metal, pipes, you know, kind of anything that's in the refuse stream, and it tends to cause more damage to the equipment. That was the first one we'd done at NARS, and so we kind of learned that it takes a higher level. You kind of set up your own allocated amount of maintenance that you think it's going to take, and that's kind of what you pay for. With this one with NARS, we've learned that it's not the same as Kiefer, and we can't build with a kind of a comparable maintenance package.
Okay. So I would just, you know, in the future, if you're going to negotiate a lease, include that, take that into account, so we know what that cost is going to be upfront.
And I think one other component that Doug had mentioned to me is that with the leases, what we lease is one and a half loaders, and that gives him two loaders pretty much at all times because of the commitment of the vendor to make sure that they're both operating. If we were to purchase loaders, we'd have to buy four, just to make sure that there was always at least two available to operate. So that, even though the per loader cost is about the same, as Doug mentioned, for maintenance and operation of a loader, the fact that we'd have to buy so much more to have uptime, as he talked about, with the loaders being available, we'd have to buy four as opposed to leasing one and a half or two. So that's the savings.
And again, I'm not second-guessing the business decision about doing a lease over purchase. I'm just saying this was just kind of eye-popping for me, and I infer its future, again, future lease negotiations. I'm sure it's much more cost-effective for the taxpayer to build this in on the front end than to pay for it later.
Correct. And there were just a couple mistakes made at the very beginning of this with the first lease at NARS. And just as a comparison Supervisor, if you look at lease 798 versus 155, you can see the difference between NARS and Kiefer. And we have a lot of experience at Kiefer in terms of what the extra cost would be, the damage. And remember, Kiefer is a wide-open facility versus NARS that has the pillars, the bar, the walls, and lots and lots and lots of vehicles.
I'm familiar with NARS. I'm a frequent customer there myself, so thank you.
We appreciate your business. But if I can assure you that we have taken care of this going forward.
All right. Thank you. Do we have to move this separately, or, I mean, I guess it can stay on consent.
I had a question on it before, Douglas.
Yes. Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just to follow on in two points that both Steve and Doug made. So I get it when it runs over the material and you get a high vol, much higher volumes. So when you said, this is about run into, so is it that they're running into things, or things are getting entrapped underneath the loader? And I guess, yeah, recognizing volumes and some of the, you know, the log jams you have out there and long queues, is there any way to segregate? Because you talk about pipes and so forth. Is there any way to, and again, I know you're going to be bringing a whole new facility and all the contracts for building that, but under the current regime, if we've learned something, would we be better served if we had, because again, I've seen operations, I've seen it out at Kiefer, I've visited Kiefer, you know, where, you know, there's some folks who, you know, may segregate material, that if they see a long section of pipe, you know, again, not to imperil themselves or anything else, but they get it out of there, so it doesn't get entrapped behind the loader, and it costs us tens of thousands of dollars. So I guess I'm curious, Doug, with regards to operations under the current situation, you know, we're having to work throughout there, have you looked at some of those possibilities to, you know, further refine our operation that they would, you know, again, they might have some other labor costs associated with it, but when you look at, you know, again, $600,000 is a lot. I'll just say that. I mean, that's a lot of money. You know, when we're talking about rate increases and all the operational aspects that we're doing. So I guess I'm going to ask you that, is that beyond the leases for the equipment that we need to have, have we looked at things that would help avoid potentially, anyway, some of those incidents that are costing us, you know, major repair bills?
So the shorter answer is that we, there's a lot of material that we can't really foresee the damage from. When you're taking and walking over the top of trash, the operator can't see what's underneath the two, a foot, two feet underneath. We've had lots of instances where, let's say, a mattress gets wound up into the tracks of one of the landfill pieces of equipment. one of the landfill pieces of equipment. The loader can drive into the pilot NARS, and there's a two-by-eight in there, and it pops up and it goes through the windshield. You know, we have windshield guards-
Right.
But you can't always see what's underneath. NARS is a little bit special because it is very confined. You've got the bollards that separate the bays. You know, we, we do push garbage up and, and try and do a rollover to try and compact it before it actually goes into either the top loader or the compactor. We, we always, we can't see what's underneath, and, and we do incur damage on the undercarriage and things.
But mattresses, we're no longer taking the mattresses into the general, isn't that segregated? They have to load the mattresses somewhere else.
So, so the mattresses, yes, if they're good and can be recycled, but if they-
Not reused.
Not reused, if they can be recycled. But there are some that can't be recycled. They're soiled, they have blood-borne pathogens, et cetera, et cetera. Those have to be put into landfill. And they're not easy for landfill operators to deal with.
No, I know they're not.
And it's not, it's not just mattresses and, and the wire in those, it's, it's pipes, it's everything you can think of that's put in the landfill.
So do other, again, you know, and I've been to some of the private facilities as well as ours, that, you know, again, indoor, they're taking all kinds of materials. Some of it may not be as large as the, as the, you know, the cell halls that come in with a, with a, you know, a mattress, per se, but do they encounter similar, I mean, you talk to folks in the industry, that's why I ask you this question, is that, are they encountering, you know, similar, I guess, frequency too, because it's, one thing if you have an incident or two, but if you're having them frequently, and then you're having to have, you know, again, you're, that's all digging into your lease sunk cost, so.
In my career, I've had transfer stations, both and landfills, and it's all the same problem. It's, it's, the operator doesn't really know what's underneath the surface of the garbage. We, we try and compact at the landfill as much as we can. We are running over the top at NARS to compact as much as we can, have a pre-compaction. But this is a standard industry issue that we deal with. The really good news is that the mattresses, most of the mattresses are taken out. That does help the landfill tremendously.
And no longer tires, right?
Tires aren't supposed to be there, yes. Appliances, there are a lot of those things that have been pulled out.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean that somebody isn't offloading-
Yeah, I know, you get one or two, but do we have any spotters that, that are beyond those that are operating equipment that would, you know, if they're seeing white goods be unloaded, say, oh, you gotta, you know, that's going to go, or have, call somebody over that has, you know, has a building, get it out of the, or, or, or do we not have that?
Not only do we have the spotters that are looking for that, but we also have the equipment operators that, that are, are watching out. They've got to watch out for all the vehicles.
No, I know, they're obstructed, if they're, depending where they're at.
But they're also watching to see what's getting pushed out, and if they see something that's not supposed to be in the pile, like an appliance, they're going to radio over to the spotter, and will use a loader to take that out.
Hold it out, okay. All right, thanks. That's all I had.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. I'm going to ask Madam Clerk if we have any public comments at this time.
Uh, no, let me just double check.
Neither consent or open public comments?
Okay, let me double check, and as of right now, we don't.
Didn't Supervisor Desmond have a question on item 24?
I thought that Supervisor Desmond had another question on 24.
Thank you.
Okay.
Supervisor Desmond.
Can I go ahead and read that one into the record really quick? Authorization to apply for the United States Environmental Protection Agency Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act credit assistance funding in the amount of 59 million for the Arden Service Area Distribution System Pipe Realignment and Meter Installation Project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, a question and a comment, and, and thank you, Mr. Peterson, for being here and, and taking my call yesterday about this item. And this may have been something you had discussed at, at prior meetings, but in this metering project, it looks, you know, it's almost double what the initial costs were going to be, and so I had called you to ask for a little bit of an explanation about that. So if you wouldn't mind, I think it'd be important for listeners and constituents to, to hear why that is.
Yeah, Michael Peterson, Director of Water Resources. The, the project cost did not double. We always anticipated this seeking additional outside funding from some sort of borrowing source. Originally, that was going to be somewhere around 35 to 40 million. The increase to 59 is due to that much higher bid costs that we received on the first phase of the project. The design had been around for a while, and we'd really worked out the details of the design, but by the time the first phase came out, and we got actual bids, pipe costs due to petroleum prices had increased, labor costs increased. So across the board, we were seeing higher bid amounts from contractors. And that, so that, from that first phase, we went and updated subsequent phases, the, the cost estimates to ensure that we would capture what, what the new real cost is of this kind of project. The intensity of the project in terms of it happening in a built-up neighborhood, tearing up the streets, it's, it's a very tedious construction project, there's a lot of traffic control, a lot of night work, that also adds to the cost of it. But again, the 59 million, that's an increase from approximately 35 to 40 that we originally, we knew we were going to seek, and we had spoken to, to that at the board at our previous rate hearing in 2018. So that, that borrowing was already anticipated, it was just that additional 19, 20 million that is reflected.
And I, no, I appreciate that, and that's what you're asking us to approve today, the application for that. I, I was just looking at the staff report, initially projected it costs a $75 million, now the project estimated 135 million. So that's the kind of thing that, of course, is a little bit eye-popping and want to better understand. The other conversation that you and I had, and I just really want to make a comment about this, is I, I think we need to continue looking for every opportunity we can to maybe join forces with Department of Transportation for when you tear up a portion of a roadway, and I know a lot of utilities do this, where they just patch that portion of the roadway they, they tore up, to look at an opportunity to do, to do a complete overlay on that, on that roadway. And you and I had a discussion about that, and, and could you comment on that and kind of how you approach these-
Yeah.
-projects?
For, for this project in particular, given the, the age of the neighborhoods, older streets, and they were built to a lesser standard in terms of the structural section, starting with the first phase, we've, we've been working with Transportation Department to identify, in, within our contract, through partnering with DOT, to do a full pavement restoration. So rather than us doing our trench and then slurring or overlaying half the street, which would be the standard, we work with DOT and say, well, let's incorporate the additional work that DOT would otherwise need to do to restore the entire street, build that into our contract, and then we partner, you know, financial partnering with DOT, so that way we can carry it all out at one time. Because we're keenly aware of the, the patchwork concern with, with streets.
Great, thank you very much. I know, I, I join my predecessor in the concern about the conditions of our pavement, certainly in the unincorporated roadways in the county. So any opportunity we can find, really kind of to, to leverage an existing project, to maybe put something that wasn't, wasn't on DOT's timetable for another year or two, maybe, we can expedite that if we can utilize some additional resources. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, this isn't for Mr. Peterson as much as just, and on a related note, as it relates to pavement restoration, we're contemplating working with the sanitation district on the Harvest Water Project, which will bring transmission mains of recycled water into rural portions of, of the county and achieve many goals that relates to water recycling and keeping that water here in county for beneficial uses. I wanted to note, though, that this same conversation about road restoration, I, I do think that, you know, and we're going to have a budget discussion tomorrow, as it relates to roads, rural roads that are already in pretty deteriorated shape, I'll be kind when I say today, that, you know, looking to have sanitation district barrel those costs, I don't think is fair. And I think we're going to need to, you know, Mr. Hartwicks come to the podium, really take a serious look. You can't have that Harvest Water Project barrel those costs. And so how we figure out how we're going to finance, you know, basically dozens of miles of trenched roads and not make that project infeasible, because I know that's driving a lot of the cost, you know, one of the cost centers there, not all DOT's responsibility, but we've got so much deferred maintenance and such poor pavement conditions in a lot of those areas where we're going to take that pipeline. I guess I'd like to have that conversation. I know we're working that at the sanitation district, we're going to hear more about Harvest Water later this month. So Steve, I think you and Mr. Macari are going to need to sit down and strategize about how we're going to, in the after condition, and make sure we get that Harvest Water Project, you know, secured. It has other aspects that need to be noted, but also get those roads restored, restored, I mean, back to a condition that's acceptable. And it's, they're, they're only going to trench down one side of those roads, but, you know, to the point that Michael made a moment ago, you just can't slurry over them, that's not going to work out there. You know, and so, but there's going to be some costs associated with it, and I think as we talk about budget and about, you know, where our general fund dollars go and how much we allot, and not just rely solely on the gas tax. And so I, I know it's only related to this morning's conversation, but I would ask that, you know, at, at some juncture, probably in the fairly near future, that we have that conversation, we certainly can have a meeting with staff. But I think it warrants a board's look, because it's going to require some, some dedication assets, and it can't come out of District Five annual allocations. That doesn't work either, because, you know, you get hundreds of miles of roads, both suburban, rural, and some urban segments, and to think that that's how that's going to get done, or that we're going to put it all on the Harvest Water Project, that is not fair, and it's going to jeopardize potentially that project. So I, maybe you're aware of that, maybe you're not, but it's, it's key. It's a key point, and I think it needs to be a part of budget consideration. That's why I'm bringing up this morning, Anne, because, you know, we're a year or two out from the actual construction, but I don't, you know, we, we can't wait to have a decision on this, just as you're looking at, you know, replacing water meters and doing necessary improvements in, you know, suburban neighborhoods that have older street infrastructure. So it's, it's, it needs to be addressed, and it's not on the order of magnitude of a couple million bucks, it's going to be big, so.
Right. Yeah, we would come back to the board, talk to you about potential ways to, to help fund some of that. As you mentioned, general fund is a possibility, but I know as all, all of you are aware, we're looking at some redirection of the funding that basically the county generates, but doesn't necessarily get at this point. So we definitely are going to continue to, to focus on that as well.
What, what source is that?
Well, our, the, the federal money that comes through CICOG. So we'll continue to look at where we can get that money focused on our roadways, which is, you know, maintaining what we have is, is the top priority.
Okay, but I know that rural roads don't, they don't jump up there. You got a lot more people living in the neighborhoods that, you know, reflected in my colleagues' districts, and particularly in unincorporated areas, and they're long stretches with relatively population, and so when it comes to CICOG, so I caution against just-
Right.
-looking to that. And, but I want to raise this point, because I know it's bubbling up out there, and I've, you know, had some briefings, and it's relative, though, to a very, very important project where we've secured $300 million for the Harvest Water Project, but what's, one of the cost drivers is driving well in excess of that is, is road restoration. And it can't fall to that project solely. So at any rate, I won't take more time this morning, obviously this was a consent item, but it's, it's important. And I guess, and maybe for future reference, we could have some discussion by this board, maybe integrated into the, to the discussions about budget, because we're looking at, you know, some of the things that we'll talk about tomorrow, but I wanted to note this today, because it's, it's, it's relative and it's important. Thanks.
It is, very much so. Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Okay, at this time, we do not have public comments, and we are entertaining a motion for approval for consent.
So moved.
So moved by Supervisor Natoli, and-
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and that was for consent items one through 28. You also do not have any off-agenda callers at this time, so I'll be closing the queues.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And at this time, we'll move on to the next item. I know Supervisor Natoli's leaving at 10:30-
Yes.
-for a couple hours, so mindful of that.
Thanks.
And thanks for letting us know.
Okay, so for item 29, this is the termination effective March 9, 2021, of the proclamation of local state of emergency for winter storms, beginning on January 26, 2021, producing damaging winds.
Good morning, Chair Frost and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Mary Jo Flynn, and I'm the interim chief of emergency services. Sacramento experienced an atmospheric river event that occurred January 26 through the early morning of January 29. Damaging winds occurred during the storm from January 26 to midday January 27, and a high wind warning was in place from the National Weather Service. Since that time, Sacramento County is no longer experiencing severe storm and high wind conditions, and recovery, including restoration of power and debris cleanup, has taken place. We are required to bring to this board every 60 days a choice to either continue the emergency proclamation or to recommend terminating the proclamation. Today, I'm recommending that this board terminate the proclamation of emergency. This action does not impact our process in asking for federal or state assistance on behalf of the operational area. To date, we have submitted the initial damage estimates to the Governor's Office of Emergency Services, or CALOES, and we have made formal requests to CALOES for public assistance, including a request for the Governor's proclamation and a federal declaration. We continue to work with the staff at the Governor's Office of Emergency Services to provide any requested information that may support a recommendation to the Governor for a proclamation and hopefully release of funding for recovery. There has been no indication thus far that the Governor will make a proclamation of emergency or request a federal declaration from the President. In the Governor's March 4, 2020 proclamation of emergency for COVID-19, he waived the 60-day time period in which a local government authority must renew the local emergency. That waiver does not extend to the proclamation for winter storms producing damaging winds, nor does termination of the proclamation from winter storms impact the continuing proclamation for COVID-19. In closing, I ask that you terminate, as of today, March 9, the proclamation of local emergency for winter storms, beginning on January 26, producing damaging winds, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you Supervisor Serna.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for the report. I just want to make certain that if the board decides to affirm the recommendation today, that this is not going to have any consequence to ongoing efforts for warming centers, whether it's the city of Sacramento or ourselves.
No.
That's the first question I have. Let me, let me ask a second one. I also want to make sure that if we were not to affirm this today, that, that could have some cost consequence to our general fund. And by that, I mean that we would possibly have the federal government, FEMA, acknowledge at some point that, no, some of these costs associated with what you're claiming aren't reimbursable. And so therefore, the general fund would be responsible for paying any of those, those costs.
So let me address your first question.
Sure.
The termination does not impact, nor does our planning, impact any city's independent decision to open warming centers, or as we approach some, our cooling centers. So that still remains an option for them.
Or, or as the city of Sacramento is going to be debating, the City Council this evening will be debating the merits of a ongoing triage homeless process protocol, that's not going to have any, this won't have any effect on that.
This has absolutely no effect on that decision-making process.
Good.
And to address your second question, the general fund has already been utilized in some capacity to address the issues in response to this incident. And so any recovery that we're able to get going forward will be a benefit to the county, and that's part of why we engaged in this process, because to not engage in this process completely cuts off that possibility.
Right.
But I certainly don't want to lead you to believe that money is forthcoming. We have done everything our office is required to do to address the information with the Governor's Office and make sure they have that resourced information and the damages that occurred within the county, so that they, their staff can make a recommendation to the Governor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. I don't see any other supervisors queued up. Mary Jo, thank you for very thorough presentation. Do we have a motion for approval?
And we do not have any public comments.
Oh, I'm, thank you.
So moved.
So moved by Supervisor Serna, and seconded by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, next item, please.
Okay, so for your next item, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency, and this is a public hearing to adopt resolution to withdraw the City of Rancho Cordova from the Zone 11A, Zone 11B, and Zone 12 of the Sacramento County Water Agency. The environmental documentation is a categorical exemption.
Good morning, members of the board. I am Michael Johnson with the Department of Water Resources. This item requests your approval to withdraw the City of Rancho Cordova from the Sacramento County Water Agency Drainage Impact B Zones 11A and 11B, and from the Drainage Maintenance Operations Zone 12. The board will hold a public hearing to consider testimony from the public on this withdrawal. Additionally, the board is asked to increase appropriations in the amount of $2,442,000 for Zone- asked to increase appropriations in the amount of $2,442,000 for Zone 11A and $852,000 for Zone 11B. Rancho Cordova requested these zones be withdrawn from the city because the city has enacted their own drainage impact fee program and now provides their own drainage maintenance operations. Water Resources has agreed to transfer funds from Zone 11 to Rancho Cordova that represents the balance of the unused funds collected since Rancho Cordova became a city. This action does not affect or change the county's collection of Beach Stone Lake Drainage Impact Fees within Rancho Cordova. If the board has no questions, we recommend opening the public hearing, considering all written in oral testimony, and then close the hearing. After the hearing is closed, we recommend that the board recognize that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA, adopt the resolution to withdraw Rancho Cordova from Zones 11A, 11B, and 12, and approve the appropriations adjustment request.
Thank you, Michael. I don't see any supervisors queued up for questions. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask our Madam Clerk if we have any callers.
We do not.
We do not. So, and I don't see anyone in the audience. So I'm going to close the public hearing and ask our board if we have a motion.
I'd move the staff recommendation with the
Supervisor Natoli, so moved and
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have about seven minutes before our next item, and so I would ask that we take your nominations if we could, and that would be item 38.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you are continuing to March 23, the Disability Advisory Commission, continuing to April 6, the Adult and Aging Commission, continuing to April 20, the Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, the Kasumnus Area Community Planning Advisory Council, the County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Kasumnus, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, and the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for today, you guys have a lot of items. So Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please nominate Chris Jensen and reappoint Mark Jacobs. Continue the remainder to April 6.
The Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please reappoint Damian Schiff and Thomas Roten. Continue the remainder to April 6.
Assessment Appeals Board.
Chiefs recommend nominating Luis Ambrose. Continue the remainder to April 20.
The Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to April 6.
And Supervisor Desmond?
Sorry. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Please reappoint Nicholas Bloes and Matthew Burnett and nominate Michael Feliciano. Continue the remainder to April 6.
Thank you. Children's Coalition.
Chiefs recommend nominating Roxanne Stelmacher and reappointing Sudhir Pandichara, Crystal Harding Jenkins, and Joshua Green. Please continue the remainder to April 20.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Chiefs recommend nominating William Hale and reappointing Amar Sheergill and Kristy Lack. Pardon me. Continue the remainder to April 20.
Fair Oaks Cemetery District.
Please reappoint Patricia Vogel.
Okay. Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend nominating Ashley Sterling and reappointing Rebecca Thurman. Continue the remainder to April 20.
Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council.
Reappoint Jill Zito and Rosalind Bryant and continue the remainder to April 20, please.
Thank you. Public Health Advisory Board.
Please continue to April 6.
Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend nominating Nicholas Erickson. Continue the remainder to April 20.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board.
Please nominate Ryan Gallant as a consumer representative.
Okay. And you want to continue?
Continue the remainder, yes, April 6, please.
Okay, thank you. And then we have Supervisor Frost.
Please nominate Bradley Luth. Continue the remainder to April 20.
Okay, and then Supervisor Natoli?
Did it continue for about four weeks? We didn't need to do an interview with the candidates, so.
Okay, and Supervisor Kennedy?
Please continue to March 23.
Okay, thank you. I think I covered everyone. Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee.
Please nominate Jeremiah Lowry.
Okay, and then Sacramento Environmental Commission.
Continue to April 20, please.
Okay, and then we just have three minutes, and if you, if the board wishes, we could also take your appointments from your own ranks, that's item 37, to the County of Sacramento and City of Sacramento, two by two, for the Executive Director Performance Evaluation of the Sacramento County Housing and redevelopment agency.
Question, what's the title mean? Did, you know, your point?
They just called it a two by two for the performance evaluation. I was contacted by the City of Sacramento asking for the appointments from County of Sacramento, but there isn't really an official title.
Okay.
But this is just review of the executive director, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Just one person or two?
Two.
We did this a few years ago.
Yes, the last two that did this were Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Natoli, I think, yes. And the two that have been identified from the city are Rick Jennings and Angelique Ashby.
Correct.
But I would certainly defer, I think, to other members, you know, we went through, because there was a whole salary adjustment and we took it the last time. I think Supervisor Kennedy will remember that and so.
Could I suggest Supervisor Kennedy and myself?
That sounds fine with me.
Sure. If there's no objection from members.
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Okay.
You don't need a vote or just need, we do need a vote. Yeah, let's So I'll take that as a motion from Serna and second from Natoli. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, and so we are just one minute shy of our
This is very unusual for us.
And I will note that Supervisor Natoli will be returning later this afternoon.
Yes. Okay, so I think we'll just hold on for a moment. I think that clock is going to keep moving forward.
Okay, so here we go. Item 31 is the report on COVID-19 response.
Good morning, Jim.
Jim Hunt, you're Acting Director of Health Services, and Dr. Olivia Caserio, Health Officer. One of the things you asked us to report on this week was the status of the epidemiology and laboratory capacity grant. That's the $59 million that we were authorized shortly ago. Just Friday, the state conducted its first training webinar on allowable costs and submitting the plan. We are working on that, although there were still a number of significant questions that were not answered in that webinar. So we have nothing to report to you today on exactly what that plan looks like, and we hope to have that by our next report in two weeks. We're on top of it. We know how important it is, but we need to have the guidance. We need to make sure what we recommend is in line with what will be authorized and approved. So let's see what we got here. So you've seen this slide before, but the numbers have changed. This is based on the state's seven-day average, and it's actually a week behind. This is what will be updated today. And the numbers for today are 9.5 per 100,000, so we're getting closer to that seven level, 3.8% for the positivity rate, and 5.8% for the equity positivity rate. So we're looking real good except for those cases per 100,000. You may have heard that the governor has proposed a change in that metric to go to 10 cases per 100,000. That will happen when the state hits 2 million doses administered to equity populations. We haven't reached that yet. And quite honestly, I think it's going to be a race as whether we hit that first or whether we get our number down to seven first. But within the next couple of weeks, I think we'll be there. So that looks very good. So let's talk about vaccines. Now, this needs to be updated.
Excuse me, I'm sorry Supervisor Desmond, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on that, and specifically just to be clear, we would still need to stay, regardless of whether we meet the threshold at eight or the 2 million, we still would have to be in it for, in that status for two weeks or would it trigger us going to the red right away because of that new kind of metric?
They did clarify that, say, for example, if the state did hit the 2 million in the lowest quartile by next week, and therefore that would change the red tier threshold to 10 per 100,000. Since this week, we are below the 10 per 100,000. If next week they have changed the threshold, then we would go straight into the red tier. So it could happen as early as next week or the following week. I guess we'll just have to keep monitoring.
Thank you. No, that's, I think that clarification's important. Thank you.
I don't know how you keep up with all these changes, by the way. I think you deserve an award just for that. Supervisor Serna has a question.
Thank you. That's actually a good segue, Madam Chair. So my question has to do generally with how our constituents are attempting to interpret messaging, different messaging that comes from both the Biden administration and the state administration. I think you're both well aware that, I think it was last week or the week prior, President Biden announced that his objective is to see that every adult has access to vaccine by, I believe, the end of May. So how would, how would someone that's generally concerned about acquiring a vaccination that perhaps doesn't qualify today because of age or occupation, how would someone reconcile what is being said in terms of a goal that the administration, the federal administration is saying versus where we are today and then trying to figure out, okay, how do we, how do we get there? It seems to me that part of the frustrating exercise, quite frankly, over the last 12 months has been exactly that, whether it's the Biden administration or the previous one, is trying to understand what does it all mean to me as a citizen of the country, as citizen of the state. Back then, it was testing. Now it's obviously vaccination. So maybe you can address that.
So the federal government makes the allocations to the state, but the state is the one that gives guidance as to who qualifies or, and also how much each of the county gets. So right now, with the last update that they did, we are still, and I know that's one of the slides, the next slide, that shows the different phases and tiers, that has changed over time as well. But right now, we are still in Phase 1, Phase 1B, Tier 1. Starting next week, we will, they will add the congregate settings with outbreaks. That will include the incarcerated and those experiencing homelessness and also frontline essential workers. At the same time, they will also add persons aged 16 to 64 that have certain medical conditions that put them at risk. So that's a large increase. So a lot more people are going to be eligible in the next week or so, but the rate limiting factor will be the amount of vaccine.
And should we, unfortunately, if we should experience what we've experienced thus far with, I would, you know, characterize to some degree as overpromising and underproviding, could we find ourselves in another bind where someone takes a look at that much more latitude for vaccine distribution and, you know, makes the claim that, hey, I'm, I fall into those categories now. I should have access to vaccine. And are we going to continue to be faced with the challenge of saying, we understand that, but we just don't have it? That, to me, those are, that's kind of the essence of some of the, you know, traffic that comes across my inbox from constituents, and I'd really rather not have to, have to spend a lot of time explaining the nuance of that. So I think it's really important that we kind of prepare for appropriate messaging if we find ourselves again conflicted because of what the guidance tells us versus what the availability really is.
Yes, and that's an important point you bring up, that being eligible doesn't mean that you automatically will be, have access to an appointment because definitely the demand is much greater than the number of doses that we are getting. Our hope, especially with the promises that we're hearing at the federal government level, is that the, there will be a marked increase in the number of doses available, and that will assist with the demand.
Good. Well, I'm hopeful that, you know, we can stay on top of the critical nuanced messaging as much as anything because I think what you just said, Dr. Caserio, is really important for people to understand.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna.
Just for your information, these are the conditions that the state has established would qualify folks that are 15 to 64 for vaccinations when we start that next week.
I also want to point out with this is that our hope is that many of them will be vaccinated by their healthcare provider.
Yes.
Because the healthcare provider will have the medical records. But we also do recognize that many people, their healthcare provider does not have access to the vaccine or they don't have a healthcare provider. So we will still be able to vaccinate them, and we're working on that process to make it as low a barrier as possible. There have been discussions about how to make the verification, and we are actually going to do it by self-attestation.
Excuse me Supervisor Desmond.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, on your, on the chart with the, who you're vaccinating now, food and agriculture workers are included, right? So that was just a typo.
We started that.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
Right.
Started them yesterday?
Yeah, it started yesterday. It's because we, this PowerPoint was put together last week, so we didn't get a chance to update it on this slide.
So there's been some question now that we've got the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine of what's best. And the CDC says all of them are highly effective and at preventing COVID-19 and even more effective at preventing serious illness or death. And so what's the best vaccine? Whichever one you can get. So here's what we've been getting. And this is our first dose allocations. What I'll be talking about today are our first dose allocations. As a county, we have been getting a good supply of second dose allocations. Once we get that first one, the second one is pretty much guaranteed. So there hasn't been a problem for counties. There has been for our multi-county entities, our health providers. As you can see, we got our first allocation of Jensen, which is the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. We are receiving that as we speak. In fact, I spoke to Dr. Sandy Dalmiano this morning, and she has received 200 doses for the main jail and 200 doses for R triple C. And that's particularly beneficial there because of the high turnover. 72% of our jail population is out in 14 days. So scheduling a second appointment is really a challenge. So that's one of the populations we'd serve with that vaccine. We're also looking at it for homeless persons, farm workers, and those who are highly mobile or very difficult to access. So if we only have one chance, let's get them vaccinated with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. For the more stable populations, we'll use the Moderna and Pfizer.
Excuse me, Jim. Supervisor Kennedy has a question.
Yeah, why is it, or do we know that the statewide percentage for Sacramento County seems to be a downward slope?
I'm glad you asked that. The state uses an allocation methodology, actually, it's Blue Shield now, that uses the allocation methodology and recommends to the State Department of Public Health what the allocation should be. Every two weeks, the governor changes his mind and the allocation methodology changes, and it has not benefited Sacramento County. In fact, were it not for the Jensen vaccine, we would be at 13,990, which is the lowest since the January 25. It just keeps going down and down. In two weeks, I think the vaccine supply is going to increase dramatically. Business Week just reported that the first two weeks of February, Pfizer was producing between three and four million doses per week. By next week or the week after, they should be up to 13 million. Johnson &amp; Johnson, this is our first allocation, it may be a week or two before we get another one, maybe the end of the month. They are talking They are talking about a substantial increase then, maybe 100 million doses nationwide. So we could be very good shape by the end of the month. Right now, we're tight. We're very glad to have gotten that Jensen supplement. Now, of course, this doesn't include our multi-county entities like Sutter Health. Now, this, I'm talking about first.
Excuse me, excuse me. Were you done, Supervisor Kennedy? I thought you were still asking.
No, I'm not done.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, you're not moving, you're still continuing to answer the question.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah.
He wasn't in.
Okay. Let me, let me restate the question, because you, 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 very, in a very politic way, you explained that we are in the situation we're in, but my question was, why? You, you said that Sacramento County isn't benefited from these decisions.
Well, if you look at the, the distribution, Fresno and Kern, with maybe two-thirds of the population of Sacramento County, are getting far more doses. That's because of the emphasis on farm workers.
Okay.
And there may be some.
So, so, so would an, would an answer be because of the different tiers and so forth, and they have a higher number of those particular categories, that's why they're benefiting more than we are?
That's correct.
That's true. That's true.
Thank you.
So when we start emphasizing the inequitable distribution, where we, you probably saw the news reports that we're looking at the lowest of the equity profiles, and we have 11 zip codes in Sacramento County, 40% of the allocation will be going there.
Right.
We do not know how we fare statewide with that metric.
Right. Okay.
And so when, when it changes again, it's a matter of where we fall.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, excuse me, Supervisor Serna, and then Desmond.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief, because I think you, you kind of acknowledged or answered some of my, my concern in addressing Supervisor Kennedy's concerns. But I just wanted to point out, Sacramento County is roughly 3.8% of the state's population, and yet, when you see one, you know, 1.65%, we're getting, I mean, I know, I know that you can't simply say on a per capita basis, a simple per capita basis, we ought to be getting double. But it is distressing to, to, to think about how disproportional the percentage of vaccine distribution has been to date for a county that has, you know, twice the percentage population compared to the rest of the state, when it's, you know, so, it seems just so disproportional. And I understand the nuance really is, and what you just said, has to do with the occupations, has to do with how the governor, the administration rolls out who is next in line, so to speak. But it, it's still very concerning to us, because we're the ones that, and I know you know this, but I'm going to say it out loud again, we're the ones that have to interact with our constituents and do the very, sometimes very complicated explanation as to why they're not in line yet. So the more that we can, again, do our best to pay attention to the critical messaging and explanation, whether it's on our website or by other, other means, that, that is, that's critically important, not just to keep, you know, emails from coming to us or phone calls coming to us, but it's really so that people don't continue to have such angst over feeling like it's not going to be until October until they get their, their vaccine. I can't stress that enough. And it's, and when you see numbers like this, it just, it just makes me that much more concerned that we're going to have a heck of a challenge in front of us to continue to, you know, play catch-up when it comes to, to critical messaging.
All right. Let me clarify. The percent of state total, I included that column to show you the decrease in our allocation. It should not be compared with overall state population, because this does not include the allocations to multi-county entities, or what CVS and Walgreens are doing. So it, it's not a fair comparison to, to compare it to our population because of those factors. But it, it's real clear that we have been getting fewer and fewer doses of the percent of the total. The statewide's total has gone up dramatically, and ours has decreased. Something wrong with that, but that's, that's what we're playing with right now.
Excuse me, are, are you done, Supervisor?
I am, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for the presentation. I know you're in a difficult spot. I echo my colleague Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Kennedy, I was looking at these numbers the same way, and that's very distressing. But even with your explanation, it's, it's, it's still distressing. And, and if, if the explanation from the state is that we're diverting more doses towards these, these counties that have a higher number of agricultural workers, I mean, that, that's, that's great, but we still, we were already lagging behind other counties in the categories above food and ag workers, right? So that's, to me, and so my, I guess my, my follow-up question to that is, what are the, the communications like with the state public health and even our legislative delegation here in Sacramento County? I mean, is this being brought to them? Are, are they aware of how Sacramento County is lagging? And it's, to me, it's a bit of an embarrassment for the state of California that the capital county is, is lagging behind all these other counties and is seeing such a persistent decrease in, in vaccine allocations.
Two weeks ago, your board directed us to prepare a letter to our legislative delegation explaining exactly that. We did that. It has been sent to them. Dr. Casiri and I have been in direct contact with the leadership of the Department of Public Health and Blue Shield. And by the leadership, I mean their director and their regional vice president. So they know our names. And let me go on with my presentation. I'll give you a little more information on that.
And then one, one more thing, Jim, you know, I know you're going to get to this. I looked at the, the next slide about some of the multi, multi-county partners that you have, and you mentioned that they're going to have some problems with some of the second doses they're getting. I think that you alluded to that. I'm, I'm, I really want to hear more about that, because we are going to hear about that from our constituents, because they don't make the distinction. You know, they just, it's, it's a constant effort, I think, to explain to constituents that, hey, the county only, only has so much control, so I'm going to really want to know more about that and how the, the state or those multi-county partners plan to address that issue.
I'm really glad you asked that.
Perfect segue. Thank you.
Great segue.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yes.
I know you want to. You're trying to.
We're talking about first doses on this slide. I should have highlighted that, but we're talking first doses. Our multi-county entity partners aren't getting them. And as a matter of fact, you probably read in the Bee this morning, I also noticed an article in the San Jose Mercury News on Saturday, discussions of the Sutter Health issue. The San Jose paper's headline was, "Sutter Tries to Overcome a Shortage of Doses." Bee says that Sutter canceled 21,000 appointments because of vaccine shortages. The healthcare provider still is not scheduling appointments for first doses, instead prioritizing getting shots to people awaiting second doses, a plan with which we agree. Sutter will get 30,000 doses next week, March 8 this week, allowing everyone awaiting a second dose a shot within six weeks of the first dose. And as I'm sure you're well aware, Pfizer recommends three weeks and Moderna four weeks. So that gives an indication of, of the problems with supply for our MCEs.
I thought it was two weeks.
It's, it's three weeks for Pfizer and four weeks for Moderna.
It's for, for Moderna and four weeks for Pfizer.
So at any rate, in communicating with Blue Shield, this is a direct quote from the regional vice president to me, "Dealing with these second dose shortages has resulted in a lower-than-preferred increase to the L H J, the local health jurisdiction, directly." And that will likely be the case next week as well. Of course, next week, we won't have the, the Jensen doses. The, there's hope on, on the horizon. Like I said, we've got more vaccine coming down the pike. I believe by the end of the month, we will be in far better shape. And who knows, one of these days, the allocation methodology will favor us. Dr. Casiri.
Excuse me, Supervisor Desmond.
Just one quick follow-up. So if, if there's a six-weeks delay, let me just anticipate this concern obviously coming in. What impact does that have on the effectiveness of the second dose?
It does not have an impact, and that is allowable by the CDC, but of course, again, as Supervisor Serna mentioned, it's in the messaging, because when you're expecting to get your second dose at four weeks, and you're told that you're going to have to delay, and you may not know exactly when, it, it has created some anxiety. So we've been trying to respond to that and reassure people that they will get their second dose.
I would like to mention that Kaiser seems to be doing well. They're getting 20% of the statewide allocation right up front. As a matter of fact, yours truly was able to get vaccinated yesterday in South Sacramento. They've converted a large furniture store into a mass vaccination site and are pumping people through there.
Yeah, they're sending out notices.
So I just have a few points to add to that. I just wanted to acknowledge that March 5th marked one year since we declared a health emergency for COVID-19. And I just wanted to, again, think about all the people who have been impacted. We've had over 1,500 deaths. And so the families that have been impacted by that, we've heard many of the stories, and we know how devastating it has been. And we have close to 95,000 that have been reported as with COVID-19, many of them having ended up in the hospital with very severe disease. So just wanted to acknowledge the impact that COVID-19 has had on our community. And then, of course, with the health officer orders, the closures, and the calls we've gotten from businesses of, you know, individuals that are hurting because of the business closures, and just wanted to acknowledge that as well. I also want to acknowledge all the supervisors for their support from the beginning through the declaring the health emergency, through the different phases of the health officer orders, with all of the issues with testing, with allocating us the funding so that we, we were able to get additional staffing as well as provide support to the community. I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank you. And also to thank all the staff and volunteers and the partners, such as the hospitals and the, and the community-based agencies that have all been so willing to come alongside, work long hours, doing everything that they could. Even now with the vaccination, many, we're still getting emails of people saying, how can I help? I want to help. So just wanted to thank everyone, and also to acknowledge this, the place where we are at right now, with a light at the end of the tunnel, a real light this time, because with the vaccination, we know that we are going to be able to protect people. So we're working really hard on that. And as Jim Hunt mentioned, advocating as much as we can to get more doses and working with our partners. We're hoping that next, next presentation, we will be able to present to you the plan that we have for the equity measures. As Jim Hunt mentioned, there are 11 zip codes that were included that are supposed to get part of the allocation of the 40%. So we've been working with all of the hospitals and community-based agencies and starting to work for that. So I'd like to present a plan for you to see that, all the work that's going into it. And hopefully, the next time we present, we'll have better news as far as the number of doses we're getting. So, but just wanted to acknowledge all of you and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Casiri, and thank you for all of your hard work. I, I know we have ongoing, ongoing conversations about several different things from several supervisors, so that we're working on. One that's pressing on my mind is the, the school waivers, which I know you, you know, I'm, we're advocating for. And can you just, just for the benefit of our constituents, explain about the school waiver versus the new rules with the opening of the schools with the CDPH?
So there are a few processes that are in play. One of them is a waiver that was started actually back in November, where school, when we, when we're still in the purple tier, if we got to a certain threshold, the schools were able to, to request, submit a waiver, a request, and submit a protocol and a plan for how they, the measures that they were putting in place to provide a safe environment. And so we did that process for a while, and then we got to the red tier, and then we went back to the purple tier, and so we weren't able to continue with that. Also to point out that the waiver was only for K through sixth grade. And then in January, the state did update their guidance and change the threshold to 25% of 100,000, so higher than it was before. And then also, at the same time, also introduced a new process, a safety review for schools that were in the process of active reopening in January. And so there's been, it's, it was a confusing process that they set up, and I know that even in the health officer calls, there are a lot of questions about who would qualify and who would not. We did receive a request through that process, through one of the school districts. And so we, we called the state to find out if our interpretation was correct, and the state did say that it, it can only be active reopening, and they have certain criteria in their guidance as to what they consider as active reopening. So it was very difficult, but we could not approve that, the, approve, the application that we had received through that process, and this was to be able to open 7th through 12th, because the state does say in their guidance that 7th through 12th cannot be reopened during the, the purple tier. So I know that that's been very difficult, because we've worked real closely with the school district and continue to work with them. We've worked with them to be able to open the sixth grade. I'm hoping that soon, we'll be able to get into the red tier so that all the schools can open, but.
So are you saying that they never could, there never was that consideration for 8th through 12th? It was only up to sixth grade?
It, the waiver process is only up to sixth grade, but there was this specific process that they, the state created a safety review for only specific situations, and as I mentioned.
They were hoping.
They were hoping.
For an exception.
Exactly.
Okay. And I think there's some misunderstanding, and I'm hoping we can get some clarification, because between CSAC, which I brought it up at, CSAC, and they clarified that the waiver is different than the regulation. There seems to be some disconnect between the three, and between the county, CSAC, and the state. So can you guys, can you please help us clarify that with the state, so that we're all on the same page? Because it seems like there's, there are differing understandings of the waiver situation.
Yes, and I had emailed them several times, but I, I will email them again and ask that they send the email to all of us so that we can clarify.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Doctor. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Jim, I don't know if you're at the conclusion of your presentation or not, but since Dr. Casiri, I think, you know, rightfully brought up all the thanks and gratitude that our healthcare workers deserve, in the spirit of giving thanks, I, I want to acknowledge and thank Dr. Casiri most recently for her willingness to work directly with WellSpace Health, and Dr. Jonathan Portius of WellSpace, and Dr. Barra, their leadership with WellSpace, to see that the vaccination clinic that was operating at Grant Union High School in the, in the north part of my district, in the Del Paso Heights community, they were, as was reported in the local media, they were facing closure for a lot of different reasons I will, I won't go into. But I think what we saw happen last week is that even though we perhaps have different perspectives on, you know, the, the regulations affecting vaccine distribution or the protocols affecting vaccine distribution, we came together very quickly, I should say, Dr. Casiri did with, under her leadership, to see that, that vaccination site will, will continue to operate. So I wanted to, again, publicly express my thanks to you, Doctor. And then I also wanted to also acknowledge the fact that we're, as we progress through understanding how vaccine distribution works and the challenges associated with, with that effort, we're, we're encountering. we're encountering a lot of different, unique partners. And one of those partners that I'm happy to acknowledge today is our Mexican consulate. Dr. Kasiri and I happened to be at the Mexican consulate yesterday with our Council General, Liliana Ferrer, and had the opportunity to do a little speaking before the press, acknowledging Ellica Health, which is another partner that's helping with vaccine distribution at that site. And this will actually be a site that is intended to not just help Sacramento County residents, but certainly the 24-county service area for the Mexican consulate in the north part of the state. So, you know, hats off to you and to all of our public health professionals that are in the public sector, the private sector, in capacities of leadership or those that are actually putting the needles in arms. Can't say enough about the good work that's being done. But it really, I think, has demonstrated to me a real strong focus on problem solving because this certainly hasn't come without its difficulties and its challenges. So I just want to make mention of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond.
Yes, and let me underscore some of those comments. You know, Dr. Kasiri, thank you. I mean, you certainly demonstrated such a genuine concern, first and foremost, for the victims of this terrible virus, the people who have had their lives affected by the economic implications and the businesses affected by it. And you've tried to balance all those competing interests and certainly appreciate you navigating this so well. And like Supervisor Serna said, working through these problems as they come up. And I want to acknowledge you and Supervisor Serna for your efforts to keep the clinic open in Grant High School where it's so desperately needed. And I think it's great that Ellica is part of that partnership, and they'll be doing a clinic in my district, actually, at St. Villalmaine School, I think, in a couple of weeks or so. So that's wonderful and so much needed. I had a question about the, now that the CDC has issued some additional guidance on what people who've been vaccinated can do. You know, the question has come up from several of my constituents. Hey, are we going to get some guidance at the local level about, you know, I've been vaccinated. My mother, who's in a skilled nursing facility or assisted living facility, has been vaccinated. When will I be able to see my loved one? So can you comment a little bit on that or where do you think that's going to go and when we'll get some guidance on that?
Sure. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, the CDC recently released guidance that allows people who are fully vaccinated to be able to meet in certain situations if everybody is vaccinated without wearing a mask. But also to point out that in public, we are still recommending that people wear masks. As far as changing our guidance, we have to wait for the state because the state has a masking order in their state order. So in order for us to be able to change our guidance, the state needs to change theirs because we're not allowed to be more lax than they are. They're fully aware of all of the questions that people are asking. So I'm hoping that that guidance will come soon. And also as far as the long-term care facilities, that they're changing their guidance for visitation as well to make it more possible for people to, families to be able to visit their loved ones. So we'll provide that as well. And I'm also very happy to report that we, the number of cases we're getting in the long-term care facilities has drastically reduced. So with our next presentation in a couple of weeks, that will be part of it to show you how that has progressed. And I think a lot of that is also because of the decision to start with vaccinating in the long-term care facilities. So I think that is great. And I know that a lot of families are looking forward to being able to reconnect because it's one of the areas that's been really, really hard is not being able to have that in-person connection.
Thank you, Dr. Kasiri.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Kennedy.
Before I do, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. We tend to interrupt. I guess Anna and I have talked about this, and I don't know what to do about it, but I'm gonna just float a concern, not a concern, but something that we all face, I'm sure. And that's, I realize that there is a tremendous amount of uncertainty. Things change regularly at levels beyond us, and I get all of that. You guys are, you know, being as flexible as you possibly can, as are all of us. But we must be considering sites already. Right now, the answer that we give, for the most part, is, just to truncate what our answers are. I'm sure that other supervisors are similar. And that's when people say, "When am I going to get vaccinated and why am I not getting vaccinated soon enough? And why don't I know where I'm going to get vaccinated?" And, you know, it's because there's a shortage of vaccinations at the state and local and federal level and all that. But we must be considering, we must already have locations ready to go so that when those vaccinations come, we're not just waiting for them to come and then we're going to start. Is there any way that we could, without raising people's expectations unreasonably and with, you know, managing those expectations, still let people know, coming to a neighborhood near you and show, you know, where we're going to be locating these once we do have availability? Because, I mean, I'll tell you, for example, and Dr. Kasiri and I have talked about the Pennell Center. Now I find out the Pennell Center is actually going to be one on Friday, which is great. I didn't even know that. Yeah, I just feel like I'm a little in the dark as far as where these are going to be. I know we can't say exactly when, but we can say when available. Does that make any sense?
It does, and my apologies that you didn't get that information quick enough. Part of it, we were waiting for confirmation on the vaccine. As we've pointed out, since we get it on a weekly basis, sometimes it is difficult to know how much we're going to get and which.
Understood, and that's why I'm not being critical of that. But working within those parameters of not knowing how many we're going to get, we still have to have an idea of those locations, which we've already nailed down for when there's availability.
Yes, we will provide that with the next update. Part of the delay also has been that we know a lot of the community leaders have wanted to be part of that decision-making. So we're still in that process, but we will be able to give you some information for the next update, so.
And the community leaders need to be, and I totally agree with that, and I welcome that, and I appreciate the fact that you're doing it. But I think everyone up here will tell you that nothing drives you more crazy than when a city council person calls you and tells you what's happening in your district. So that's.
I agree, so I'll take.
Again, though, when our partners, MCEs or even other entities set up a clinic, we don't always get advance notice.
Okay, and I would believe that. But when you do, if we could do just a little bit better at communicating.
Got it. Understood.
Thank you.
There's room for improvement, for sure.
I believe there are no directors in the queue, and this is the end of your presentation. And I want to thank you for your very consistent reports that come back and keep the lines of communication open. I think it's been tremendously better ever since you started doing this several months ago. It's been hard at times, but it's really helping us out in the district. So I'm going to ask our Madam Clerk if we have any public comments on this item.
We do not have any comments.
Okay, and so that concludes our COVID report for today. Thank you very much. And I believe at this time, we can adjourn to closed session, and we will return at 2:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned. It's 2:16. Welcome back, everyone. It's March 9th. At 2:16, this meeting is called to order, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll and establish quorum. Yeah, Supervisors Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start out with our first item. Okay, your first item for the afternoon is Item 32, and I do need a motion to drop this item from the agenda. This is the Nueva Vista Emergency Temporary Use Permit. An emergency temporary use permit to allow counseling services associated with a congregate care facility used for two properties located at 4612 and 4616 Roosevelt Avenue. And this is in the, that doesn't have the community in here.
Southern Park.
I'm sorry, South Sacramento community. The environmental determination is a notice of exemption, so I need a motion to drop this item.
So moved, but I'd like to have our planning director come up. I have just a few questions still in process.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna and Kennedy, for that first and second. Looks like we have some discussion.
Yes.
Good afternoon. I just, I always get a little concerned when, during the briefing, I have some direct questions about, in this case, conditions. And there seemed to be a pretty convincing sentiment that the conditions had been firmly considered and the applicant was well aware of them. So I know this sometimes happens, 11th hour, but is there anything in particular that you can generally speak to about what, if anything, is going sideways late in the process here?
Sure. So what I understand is the applicant reached out to the planning staff project manager late yesterday, indicated they had some questions about the building permit component and what the cost might be to address the building permits. And they indicated they weren't ready to have the hearing today and wanted to pursue that with building some more.
I assume that we have either volunteered or they had, I would assume they would have asked about the cost of anything that they required from the county, including building permits long ago. Any sense from you that my office needs to be any more involved than it has been over the, not months, but years on this?
That, I think, is a great question. So maybe what I can do is go back and have us do another phone meeting with the applicant and try to get really clear about where they are unclear and how we can collectively help them. And then we'll reach back to your office and let you know if you can be of assistance or not. And we might need that or might not need that, but I think that offer is much appreciated.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna, and I don't see anyone else in the queue for discussion. We do have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, for the next item, I do need a motion to continue this item to April 6th. This is the Stone Ridge Quarry Use Permit Amendment to revise Condition Number 98 from a prior use permit to allow an additional seven years for required subsequent procedural actions, including issuance of the work authorization permit and modify the development agreement in regards to timing of commencement and voluntary contribution for a property located 1.5 miles south of White Rock Road in the Casumnas community. And the environmental document is a final environmental impact report memorandum.
Okay, don't see anyone in the queue for questions or comments. Do we have any, do we have a motion?
I move to continue to April 6th.
I'll say it.
I heard Supervisor Soli, Natoli, a motion, and Supervisor Desmond for a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and this has been continued to April 6th.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next item, please.
Yes, for Item 34, this is the Florin Vineyards 1 and 2, an amendment to the South Sacramento and Florin Vineyard Community Plans and ordinance to amend the zoning code ordinance 2011-0008. A rezone, a large lot tentative subdivision map, a small lot tentative subdivision map, an exception to Title 22 of the county code, and an exception 2, and a redesign review for a property located 700 feet north of Florin Road and west of South Watt Avenue in the South Sacramento community. The environmental document is an addendum to prior environmental impact report.
Hi, Chris.
Good afternoon, Chair Frost, Board members Chris Buhuli, Principal Planner. I will be providing the staff presentation for this item. The aerial shown on this slide demonstrates a number of approved and pending residential subdivisions within the Florin Vineyard Gap Community Plan area. All total, these three, or these subdivisions, represent over 750 lots for future development. The subject properties, including the proposed Florin Vineyards 1 and 2 subdivision, is shown in red on the map. The other property associated with this request is located at 7,001 South Watt Avenue and is shown in blue. The southeast Watt subdivision map is shown in orange and was previously approved, and staff is currently processing a request for a map extension. Directly north of that site is the proposed Toque Crossing subdivision in green, which is in progress and will eventually be considered for final approval by the board.
Ma'am Chair, before Chris leaves the exhibit here, just on the last one, the Toque Crossing, and I know that I'd had some follow-up from Planning Department. I've had a couple inquiries in recent weeks. When you say it's in progress, how far have we progressed and when would you anticipate we would be to hearing? I know it's going to come upon, you know, obviously, applicant making certain submittals and so forth. But do you have a estimated timeframe?
Yeah, my understanding is if everything goes as planned and we get information that is outstanding, we probably would be in to the board, I would think, by the fall.
Okay. And are there unresolved drainage issues? I thought we had dealt with drainage and such, but I saw that referenced in, you know, some of the encapsulation you sent to me relative to where the project was and so forth. And then even with this item before us today, some previous amendments to the map had to do with the drains. But I thought we'd pretty much worked through drainage issues and maybe to localize per the property, maybe it's different. But so is that accurate?
Yeah, the larger drainage issues have been resolved, and they're resolved as part of this project as well.
This one here as well.
Correct, correct, and which impacts the Toque Crossing subdivision.
Okay, so this downstream does impact what happens to the east of Elgro.
The fix here, yes, yes.
Okay. Is it dependent upon what happens with this project?
My understanding of the drainage, drainage solution is that it is all interconnected and that the improvements here do affect the upstream as well.
So in order for the upstream to proceed, does the downstream have to go first? Or if the upstream were to go beforehand, then they've got to build additional detention basins? Or I guess, again.
That part I'm not completely certain about. I would need to rely on.
Maybe a briefing, again, obviously, the main portion of today's request isn't Supervisor Serna's district, but this is an area where Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Serna, and I all kind of come together in the same general vicinity. My understanding was we addressed, you know, the major drainage components, and that was no longer, or shouldn't be an impediment to development. I didn't know that there was a sequencing that would then trigger something to have to go before somebody else could go out there. And if that's of a major consequence, I guess I'd like to know. I trust my colleagues may want to know the same, so. Okay. Okay, thanks, Chris. Thank you, Ma'am Chair.
Thank you.
As context, I wanted to provide a bit of background on the Florin Vineyard subdivision before detailing the requested entitlements. In 2011, the board approved the Florin Vineyards 1 subdivision, which included a rezone subdivision map, special development permit, exceptions, and an affordable housing plan. The boundary for the Florin Vineyards 1 project is shown on green on this exhibit. Following completion of further drainage analysis and associated Army Corps of Engineer permitting, the approved Florin Vineyard subdivision 1 map required revisions. In 2015, following a request from the applicant, planning staff approved substantial compliance determination for the subdivision map, which resulted in a re-lotting of the subdivision, a revised circulation system, incorporation of drainage facilities, and the relocation of the park. What you see here in orange is where the park site, which had recreation zoning, was previously located. Now that the park was no longer located there, the applicant desired to add residential lots in its place. However, staff concluded this modification to the map would require a rezone to a residential designation. When planning received this application, it included entitlements to rezone the prior park site in orange and entitlements to allow for the additional properties in blue to be added to the subdivision, which is considered the Florin Vineyards 2 subdivision. Planning staff identified a number of concerns with this approach, which could lead to. Planning staff identified a number of concerns with this approach, which could lead to implementation challenges. So staff requested the applicant combine the maps for ease of future implementation. The applicant agreed to combine the maps for ease of implementation with the Florin Vineyards 1 and 2 subdivision map shown here. There are a number of entitlement requests for this project, including community plan amendments, a rezone, a large lot subdivision map, small lot subdivision map, exceptions to Title 22 of County Code, and a design review. I will go into more detail on the specific entitlements requested. And we'll start by discussing the zoning ordinance amendment being requested, which affects both the Florin Vineyards 1 and 2 site as well as the 7001 South Watt Avenue property. The graphic on this slide shows the rezone exhibit for the Florin Vineyard subdivision. The zoning ordinance amendment proposes to amend the original rezone ordinance for the Florin Vineyards 1 project. It will remove the Florin Vineyard 1 parcels from the ordinance, reverting them to their preapproval zoning designation of agricultural 10. The 7001 South Watt Avenue property was also included in the zoning ordinance as it was intended to be dedicated to comply with the project's affordable housing obligation. Under the county's current affordable housing ordinance, the Florin Vineyards project is no longer required to dedicate property to meet their obligation. And instead, the applicant intends to pay in lieu fees.
Excuse me, Chris.
Yes.
Supervisor Natoli.
Chris, just looking at the map here, I wanted to be sure with the existing versus the proposed. It just went off of our screen. But on that, it shows.
Tap it again.
Oh, tap it again, okay. So I want to just ask about the site in the middle with the remapping, the zone, the O. Is that a park site? Because under the submittal that came through, or the map amendments in early part of this last decade, we actually reduced the park size acreage to not quite half. And so now we're going to add additional residential lots with the rezoning. Does that park site expand? And again, where was the original one versus where the one is now showing in the middle of the development?
We're going to have to perhaps go to.
I don't mean to throw you off your presentation. It's just you get this map up here and to me, that open space is important and not to be all gobbled up by drainage either.
Can I offer a detailed question on that? And if you could too, Chris, can you just confirm that based on line of questioning from Supervisor Natoli, that we're still at least minimally meeting the Quimby Act in terms of overall park acreage ratios?
Good point.
I'm going to need a moment to get to the, or to go back to the, where the park was originally located. I do know that there's a four acre park that's proposed with this, with this proposed subdivision.
Okay, I guess maybe back to the question and certainly Supervisor Serna built on with the Quimby Act. But there was a six acre site in the original development with the carve out for the ag residential. Now you add in more residential, and we reduced the size of that park to 3.9 acres, four acres previously. But you've added, you know, additional 200 lots roughly, and you haven't expanded the park at all. And I know obviously South Gate is the parks provider, so the ones are going to obviously dictate what their needs are and certainly know it better than I do. But I guess I'm curious as to how does that comport? Initially, the park site was, you know, contemplated for X. It was reduced to Y, and now it's Z, but you've added a bunch more lots.
That's why I asked the question about Quimby is that who knows? Maybe it was previously planned with an excess over and above Quimby minimums were. And so just because it has been reduced and more lots have been proposed, perhaps it's still within the Quimby Act minimum requirement.
Makes sense, right. That makes sense.
Okay, well, I'm going to have to.
Okay, that's fine. Just because you had the map up here. So if there's more information before we get to the conclusion of the hearing, I mean, again.
Okay.
I don't think it makes a difference to turn, in my view, supported or not. But I just, I think Quimby Act's an important point. So if there's additional fees or there was additional acreage, good to know that because there's been some alteration with the park site over time, so. Thanks.
So where I left off was on the 7001 South Watt Avenue property. It will retain its RD 20 zoning as approved with the 2011 zoning ordinance. However, the amendment will revise and update conditions for the property. This is the only entitlement associated with the 7000 South Watt Avenue property. And the property owner has indicated their support for the amendment. Following adoption of the zoning ordinance amendment, reverting land to the agricultural 10 zoning, the land comprising the Florin Vineyard subdivision must be established as provided in the rezone exhibit. The new rezone conditions will be established for the entire site per the proposed rezone ordinance. Also, as the subdivision is located within two community plan areas, the request includes an amendment to these community plans to allow density as proposed on the tentative subdivision map. This exhibit details a large lot map that is proposed for the purposes of development phasing and financing. This slide contains the small lot tentative subdivision map, which proposes to divide 76.4 acres into 285 residential lots in the RD 5 and RD 7 zones, along with the four acre park, to be dedicated to South Gate Recreation and Park District. The map also contains open space lots, a channel lot along the north, drainage and detention lots, landscape lots, and a lot for the potential future expansion of the detention basin on the western portion of the subdivision. The map includes a number of requests for exceptions to county improvement standards. These are requests to deviate from the standard street sections as provided in the county, as provided in county improvement standards and the Florin Vineyard Gap Community Plan. The county's DOT and engineering departments have reviewed these requests and have indicated their support for allowing these exceptions. A shed wide drainage plan was prepared with the project, which not only encompasses this project, but other projects in the region. Drainage facilities are shown on the graphic on this slide. On-site drainage facility, on-site drainage facilities include a basin to the west, as I mentioned, a drainage ditch traveling through the center, and a channel to the north. The channel to the north travels through two properties, which are not part of the project. These property owners have been informed of the project and are in coordination with the developer for future dedication of easements to allow for the drainage channel facilities.
Dedication or sale?
Either.
Okay.
Either. My understanding is that one of the property owners is interested in selling the property. The other, it's likely to be an easement, I would assume.
That would have to be acquired.
Correct. The project was reviewed and considered by the Design Review Advisory Committee, South Sacramento CPAC and Vineyard CPAC as a bordering community. All three bodies are recommending approval. In addition, the Planning Commission considered the request at their December 2020 meeting and recommends approval. Staff recommends the board approve staff's recommended actions in the order outlined in the report recommendation and on this slide. I am available for further questions, as well as the applicant team who is on the line.
Supervisor Natoli.
One other question for you, Chris. This relates to the RD 20 site, which is in District 5. So that was an affordable housing site under the previous submittals. It still retains the RD 20 zoning. And I guess it kind of goes back to my question about parks. If the RD 20 site was to develop first, it would be the first, you know, in that general locale development. And even if it develops simultaneously, what's the plan for parks and open space in that, on that side of the road? And I ask that because South Watt's not a very pedestrian friendly road. And there's no juncture by where somebody could actually get across there. You know, you've got large spacing between Elder Creek and Florin Road. That's the only stop locations and controlled locations. And plus it's circuitous. I mean, if somebody wanted, if that park were developed in their side and you had RD 20, that'd be the closest park, I guess, within walking distance. But it would require people going down South Watt, crossing South Watt, and then going to an interior street, whatever was developed, whether it was extension of Gardner or something else. So how do we look at that from a planning standpoint? Again, we're not dictating how development, you know, proceeds. But we also, from a good planning standpoint, if you're going to put an RD 20 site, you could, you know, load that site with, you know, dozens and dozens of families and children, you know, if it were a complex that wasn't, you know, age restricted. And yet, there would be really no viable way for folks to enjoy those parks, you know, as youngsters anyway. I mean, again, you're front on Watt Avenue, and that's not different than a lot of developments that occur in the county. But, you know, we did a lot of master planning around, you know, Florin Vineyard Gap, looked at drainage and transportation and certainly logical extensions of utilities and so forth. But I'm curious, you know, as we've looked at, you know, different iterations of this now over, you know, 10-plus years, has there been any thought about that component, particularly retaining this RD 20 site, you know, that fronts on Watt Avenue?
Yeah, I mean, there would definitely be, need to be the requirement for amenities for the RD 20 site itself, once developed, onsite amenities for the project itself to ensure that there's, you know, some onsite recreation, given the size of that parcel, which is nearly 10 acres. And so further discussions with, with South Gate are likely necessary in terms of looking at the overall development of the, of the community plan area. I will mention that there are a number of maps, not just in this real localized area that I showed the composite map earlier, but in the entire plan area, there's a lot of activity currently. So, you know, looking at the park sites that are proposed as part of the Florin Vineyard Gap Community Plan and through these development projects, which are starting to materialize, we definitely need to give some additional thought to how this, how these park sites are developed and the timing of them.
And I guess I would suggest that, and South Gate's been very, you know, they've been a leader in trying to connect, you know, communities by trails, whether it's been through the Vineyard to South Sacramento communities or linking with Trails to the South and El Grove and the Kasumnas Community Services District. But here you've got this drainage, you know, it doesn't begin or end at Watt Avenue. It's a fairly wide easement. You're going to, it's called a ditch in the staff report. It would seem to me that, because there's no break along Watt Avenue, and that if you don't want to just separate communities by a major thoroughfare, that one of the ways, and again, it'd have to get built into some infrastructure play on. But I would suggest that, you know, under or over Watt Avenue, and not necessarily obligation to this particular development, I'm not saying that, but some planning for how you tie communities together. You know, we talk a lot in these chambers and I think are dedicated the idea that walkable, livable communities, and we've got areas that are pretty much a blank slate. I mean, they're ag residential and older homes, and we're not, you know, pushing anyone to have to, you know, move out of that setting. But as we're planning for development, and you mentioned it in your staff report, you've got the RD 20 site in the Vineyard Community Plan. You've got the other portion in the South Sacramento, you know, Community Plan. And yet, there's no provision for the reality of a Watt Avenue is going to be six lanes one of these days and probably not in the too distant future. It's on the county plan. We've gone forward and secured millions of dollars to do that widening. But there's no practical way for folks to cross that between Elder Creek and Florin Road, unless they're going to have a trail that's going to go underneath the road or some sort of structure that would go over the top of it. Now, that's not unique in this part of the world. But I think as we're looking to try to, you know, create those, you know, opportunities for people of all ages, not only to use the, you know, the streams and creeks as, you know, areas for recreation and such, but to actually use those for, I don't know, there's been any thought at all about how you connect these two. Otherwise, you're going to have this, you know, very separated, you know, community framework here. And you're going to have stuff on the east side and you're going to have stuff on the west side. And the only way you're going to get to them is, you know, take your chances crossing six lanes or go down to Florin Road. And so again, I think it's something that, you know, and again, South Gate's been a leader. So this is not a criticism of South Gate or our planning department. But I think when we're working with DOT and some of the looks here, that needs to be a thought. You know, going, even going south of here, you know, between Florin and Gerber and to the north, where there's not as much residential development, but there's contemplated, you know, other job opportunities and so forth. And so I guess I would just advocate that we take a serious look at that connectivity, you know, with all the residential that's plotted and what was industrial reserve and no longer is industrial reserve. I mean, planning department supported that, board supported that in the Florin Vineyard Gap plan. But we really didn't account for linking the residential neighborhoods that are going to, yet to be developed on the west side with the yet to be developed residential areas on the east side, which was formerly going to be either agriculture or industrial. And I think we need to give some thought to that. I mean, it's on all seriousness. And maybe even with the Watt Avenue project. Now, that probably will load the project out of the water because of the cost of having a separated crossing of some sort. But it's not too late yet. And so I guess I would ask, not just from planning's perspective, but from a transportation and our parks and linking neighborhoods up. Because if you're going to have 300 potential units, because you get, with the density bonus, you can go 30 units per acre on RD 20 site, you know, 300 living units. I mean, you could have 600 or 800 people living on that site and on an island.
Yeah, we'll definitely have those conversations and look into it. This, the RD 20 site is in closer proximity to the Southeast Watt and the Toque Crossing subdivision. And I think it would line up pretty nicely with those. But as you're pointing out, the east-west connection and how you connect the park sites and trails is something to give some further exploration to.
Right. Because the last thing I say is you don't want to just have these, you know, and they're real, but gives artificial divisions of communities, which we use for community planning purposes, because you've got this wide road that, you know, serves as a major traffic carrier and certainly, you know, commercial route as well. And it's, you know, important linkage, you know, from the north county all the way to El Grove. But providing for some crossing, and I don't think there's any traffic signals that I'm aware of. I don't see any streets with any connectivity. In fact, there's, I think you're actually restricting traffic access onto Watt Avenue, even with these projects, right? There's not, there's not direct connect. They either come out to Florin Road.
Right.
Or if they're front on Watt Avenue, I guess they could use Watt Avenue. But anyway, something to think about. Sorry to take so much time, Ma'am Chair, but I just, it's a concern. I think it's something we need to take a look at from a planning perspective, so.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli.
I see the planning directors approaching the podium.
All right. Staff were able to relay some information to me, some of the project managers. So let me see if I can cover that. And Chris can jump in as well if he needs to afterwards. But essentially, you are correct. The original park was larger. It was originally at six acres, which was over Quimby at the time. But there was also more units associated with the prior project. So the, the number of units has gone from 362 down to 285. The Quimby calculation right now would actually be 4.2 acres and the park is 3.9. And so South Gate, through the process, agreed to take the extra .3 via in lieu fees, and they agreed to that through the review process. So that's sort of what has happened there. Staff also notes that to the extent that the multifamily project comes in potentially as a non-discretionary design review, they would likely pay fees rather than being subject to Quimby because Quimby happens through the subdivision map act. So not to say that we can't work with South Gate in the other projects to look for a little bit larger parks. And I'm hearing an interest by the board to do that. So we can put that, work with South Gate on that. Any other?
Leanne, if I just could, I obviously heard what I was talking about. But I just, I think it's important on these major thoroughfares to look, ways to connect that. And one way to do that is to, you know, through the trail system that, you know, and we've done a good job in the area with, you know, alignment as the buildouts occurred there. But again, I just see South Watt as being, you know, a bit of a barrier for, certainly for young folks. But I think people of any age and, you know, there may be some signalization south of here. But I'm not aware of signalization, you know, for a mile stretch along here. And so you just, you divide the communities. And so as much as you somewhat isolate the east side or to Christmas point, maybe that gravitates that way. What about the pocket there that's between, and Supervisor Serna's district is between Florin and South Watt and, you know, kind of bumps up against the creek? And then there, you know, pretty soon you get close to the city and you're in industrial, already developed property. you're in industrial, already developed property. So, I just think it needs to be part of the thought process, where there's always a solution. I wouldn't say that either, but...
I would say one of the places that perhaps we could really dig in on that issue is, I know DOT is preparing their, I'm going to forget, I'm going to, Active Transportation Plan, thank you, blanking on the name, and they are in the middle of doing that, and this is precisely the kind of thing, as part of that plan, we really need to work on figuring out where the linkages are. So, perhaps planning staff, Southgate, and DOT can go back and dig in on this issue and figure out what we need to do to be able to get that crossing, and where that should be, and how that should be done.
Good idea, because DOT is going to be before, is probably sooner rather than later, which is a good thing with their project to begin the widening and improvements to South Watt, and so, maybe this is a precursor to that discussion, maybe somebody needs to be taking a look at how you can get people safely across that road, so you can tie neighborhoods together. Thanks.
Good points. We do, are you still working through your presentation, Chris?
No.
Okay. I don't see anyone else in the queue to speak, but we do have Rick Landon and Bruce Walter, who are consultants on the project, and I'm assuming they would like to speak, they're on the phone.
I would just note too, Madam Chair, that I think we have a slide presentation already showing to the public that is...
We're not there yet.
That's the next item, right?
Yes, I think we just have a super efficient clerk. We call her Superstar.
Okay, so we do have the applicants on the line, can you hear me? Hello?
Hello, this is Bruce.
Yes, okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Bruce and Rick, I don't know which of you would like to speak, or speak first?
Go ahead, Bruce.
Hello, Bruce Walters, Walters Land Planning, good to speak with you all again. I think Leanne answered the question, questions on the park sizing, and that's our understanding as well. I think the one additional point that I would offer, that Chris alluded to, is the east side of South Watt Avenue is really served by the park proposed in the southeast Watt project, and that's 4.3 acres in size, with a potential eight tenths of an acre expansion. And that system, that land plan has a system of, I think it's called Parkway One Streets, with enhanced separated sidewalks, et cetera, to provide or promote more pedestrian east-west movement through that project, and presumably south, on South Watt Avenue, down to the multifamily site. So, I think there is more proximate recreational opportunities for that multifamily site. Of course, it all gets down to timing and phasing, and we can't forecast that with too much accuracy, but from a land plan standpoint, I can say with some assurances that there are more proximate recreational opportunities for that site on the east side of South Watt Avenue. That's all I had.
Thank you, Bruce. We do have a question from Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce, for the explanation, but it seems like you almost made Supervisor Natoli's point and concern that I share about access, especially for young people going between the west side of Watt and the east side of Watt, that if there's attractive recreational resources there, parks and whatnot, I think that even underscores the need to have safe trail systems incorporated. And I'm not prepared to oppose the plant or the staff recommendation today, but I think it is a great point, a great example of the fact that when we do have these planned communities, and you have large thoroughfares like South Watt and Florin bisecting them, there is kind of a proportional need for a safe active transportation or trail systems or whatnot, that give especially our youth the ability to, you know, cross these major thoroughfares in a safe way. And if we have an attractive use, especially for youth on one side of these massive roadways, and they're expected to travel across them even more so, we should be thinking about how to facilitate that.
Agreed.
Good point. Supervisor Serna, if I can respond?
Sure.
So, within the Florin Vineyard 1 and 2 project itself, the A Drive, that's kind of that east-west spine street, again, that's a Parkway 2 street, but it does intersect South Watt Avenue, and that is a planned signalized intersection. And there are plans for landscape corridors on each side of South Watt Avenue, so I see a connection there, again, down to phasing and timing, but I think that, in my mind, the plans are there to provide that connectivity, it just may not show on all these exhibits as well as possible.
No, and I appreciate that, Bruce, I get the point, it's not lost on me. But, you know as well as I do, based on mostly the cycle of our economy and the housing market, you can have these well-intentioned signalized intersections and other improvements that are intended to help with the safety of these projects, that don't materialize for years, you know, in some cases decades, but, and that may be even more reason why we ought to, perhaps this board might want to have a comprehensive conversation about that, and, you know, explore what policies or changes we might consider in terms of affecting the timing of those types of, that type of infrastructure. So, again, I appreciate the point, thank you.
Were you, had you concluded your remarks, Bruce and Rick, did you want to speak?
Well, I thank you for the acknowledgement, but I think that everything's been covered. I really don't have anything to add other than what Bruce brought up, but I am here for any questions, if there are any other questions of the project.
I don't see any supervisors in the queue to speak, I'm not sure if we have any public comments. I'll ask both of you to maybe stay on the line for just a moment.
We do not have any public comments at this time.
Okay, great. And we do have Supervisor Natoli with a question.
Very quickly, follow on with Supervisor Serna was posing to Bruce and Rick. Then, again, I've got the exhibit here, and I can see where it shows future connection, and interesting enough, I know over the years that, back in the 60s actually, the county had acquired easements, access rights to South Watt, and some of that may have been relinquished, and I see actually lots under this proposal mapped right up to the west side of Watt. I guess, maybe to address what Supervisor Serna and I've been speaking to, would seem to me that rather than to rely upon a unit count in order to trigger the signal, or, you know, some other mechanism that, again, I think to Phil's point, that can, you know, be heavily affected by, you know, ups and downs in the marketplace and the economy, that as we contemplate going forward with our Watt Avenue project, and of course, we would do the, you know, the inside lanes, and the outside lanes are oftentimes, and we have this downward, Supervisor Kennedy and my district meet between Gerber and Florin, same thing there, waiting for that signal that will align fairly close to where McCoy comes in, but, you know, there's going to be X amount of units, and we're widening that street right now, but, you know, the signals aren't all going to go in, some of that will go in with the street frontage. If we're actually trying to connect neighborhoods, then maybe as a part of the Watt Avenue project, we ought to look at how that signal gets timed, even, you know, may precede a lot of development that would, you know, ultimately funnel through those locations, but in order to guarantee, early on, with improvements that would provide for the signalization, and certainly the turn movements, but also then, to Bruce Walters' point, that, you know, you get landscape quarters that will, again, those will follow with development, they're not all being put in with a widened Watt Avenue. And so, recognizing that where you're seeing transitioning lands here from ag residential and industrial reserve, large lot agriculture, to residential uses as a part of the planning process, would seem to me we ought to look to the timing, and maybe, you know, I've looked at Steve on this, in talking with Mr. Vikari and our planners with DOT, that we look a way to advance that, obviously to get reimbursed with development over time, but to, at least in this general location, to make sure we've got, you know, controlled movement for pedestrians and bicyclists along Watt Avenue as a part of that Watt Avenue widening project. Again, that won't take it all, I don't think it takes it all to six lanes initially, it would take it to four lanes, and, you know, with provisions for drainage and such, for the outside lanes to develop with the new subdivisions and such. I would offer that as a suggestion. That's all I have.
Yeah, just to point out, Planning Director Leanne Moffett pointed out the condition of Approval 51, which does speak to, with the development, the timing of that, those infrastructure improvements, the signal improvements there at South Watt and A Way.
And what's the condition, I'm looking for the new conditions, I gotta, I'll get the red out, the strikeout version.
It's condition, in attachment to, it's condition of Approval 51.
I'm trying to get to it, I was going to ask you to read it, but I'll get to it here. Do you want to read what it says, please?
Yeah, I can read it. Prior to issuance of Certificate of Occupancy, install signal improvements, which may include signal poles, conduit, detector loops, et cetera, and installation of new audible pedestrian signal heads for, and ADA compliant pedestrian push buttons throughout the intersection on South Watt Avenue and A Way for a 6x2 signalized intersection pursuant to the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, the Sacramento County Improvement Standards, and to the satisfaction of the Department of Transportation. Align the signal with the future street to the east as shown in the Florin Vineyard Circulation Plan.
Then, what about the timing, so it says Certificate of Occupancy, before the first unit is occupied, that signal has to begin, is that what that means?
That is what that would mean, yes.
So, this developer installs signal has to go in as a part of the basic infrastructure, it's not incumbent on some other ones where you have 300 units or 200 units before that's triggered?
That's correct.
Oh, really? Okay, well, I guess that addresses, you know...
Went from a concern to a perhaps a model.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Okay, very good.
Very good. I don't see anyone else in the queue for questions, we don't have any public comments, and so, I will ask the board for a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move staff recommendation.
I'd second it.
Motion by Supervisor Serna, second by Supervisor Natoli, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Okay, so we also have applicants for Item 35, could you please transfer the applicants? And I'm going to end the call with the current applicants, thank you.
Thank you for your help with this, Rick and Bruce.
Okay, for Item 35, this is the Gerber Walmart fueling station, use permit, special development permit, and design review for a property located at 8915 Gerber Road, at the northeast corner of Elk Grove Florin Road and Gerber Road in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is an environmental addendum to prior final environmental impact report, and I also need to state that we would need to take an oath for this item for any of the public commenters or the applicant.
Okay, should we do that at the time?
We should do that now, and that way it's just out of the way.
And are they on the phone?
Yes, so, do we have the applicants on the line? Mr.?
Yes, this is Madam Chairman, my name is Brent McManigle, attorney representing Walmart, and I'm the only one from the representative team on the call.
Okay, Mr. McManigle, I'm going to take your oath right now. So, please raise your right hand, okay, thank you. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, so help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And then, if you could just state your name for the record again, and the statement that you have been sworn.
Yes, my name is Brent McManigle, representing Walmart, and I have been sworn for my testimony.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. McManigle, and I think, Chris, you have a presentation.
I do. So, this item, as well as the next one on your agenda, are related to the proposed Walmart fueling station. The project site is located on a vacant corner that is approximately one acre at the northeast corner of Gerber Road and Elk Grove Florin Road. The site is shown in red crosshatch on the graphic, and is adjacent to the existing Walmart Supercenter store. The entitlements requested with this project include a use permit to allow an eight-island fuel station and roughly 1,600 square foot convenience store in the shopping center zone. It also includes a special development permit to allow a new primary fuel station without public frontage, and to allow an off-site monument sign, and finally, a design review to comply with the county's design guidelines. This site perspective includes the proposed fuel station, and shows that the frontage landscape is already installed along Gerber Road and Elk Grove Florin Road. The hard corner also has a nice design treatment, which features a monument sign, bench, and other landscape and architectural features. This slide shows the landscape plan, and demonstrates that a considerable amount of landscaping is proposed to meet the county's required landscaping and parking lot shade requirements. Landscaping in trees will enhance the site and screen the back of the convenience store, which would otherwise be visible from the Walmart Supercenter's store parking lot. While I'm on this slide, I'm also going to highlight one of the deviation requests included with the special development permit, is to allow the fueling station with no public road frontage. While the project site is adjacent to Elk Grove Florin Road and Gerber Road frontages, the site itself technically has no public road frontage. The parcel surrounding the subject site, and developed with the Walmart Supercenter store, includes the public street frontage and associated landscaping with Elk Grove Florin Road and Gerber Road. So, although the subject parcel does not have its own frontage, the spirit of the public frontage requirement is met in that the existing approximately 20-foot-wide landscape separates the subject parcel from the existing right-of-way. This graphic shows the convenience store, which is proposed to be a gray modular building with a brick veneer. I should note that this design is not consistent with the existing facade treatment for the Walmart Supercenter store. However, Walmart representatives have vindicated, they are intending to propose a future facade upgrade to the Walmart Supercenter store to match the corporate image, and it will be consistent with this proposed fueling station. Here are the building elevations for the convenience store. The building was designed to create interest on all four sides through changes in material and color and facade treatments, including canopies, light fixtures, and parapet heights. The proposed canopy will feature a brick veneer base to match the proposed building. As I mentioned earlier, the fueling canopy will include eight pumps covering 16 dispensers. The slide shows the proposed price sign, monument sign is depicted here with a brick veneer base to match the proposed convenience store and canopy. The applicant is requesting a special development permit to allow an off-site sign. The proposed sign will be located within the landscape area, which is between the fueling station and the right-of-way, where you would expect to see the sign. However, it is technically off-site and on the larger parcel associated with the Walmart Supercenter. On this exhibit, the location of the sign is shown with a red dot. The Vineyard CPAC and Design Review Advisory Committee considered the project and both recommend approval. The Planning Commission considered the project in November 2020 and recommended approval. I should note that the applicant expressed concern during that hearing with... I should note that the applicant expressed concern during that hearing with two conditions during, two conditions, condition 14 and 15, 55. Condition 14 is a security-related condition, which has been revised following review by the Sheriff's Department. Condition 55 relates to the amount of shelf space dedicated to healthy foods. This condition has not been modified since the hearing. Staff is recommending the board recognize that the final EIR prepared for the Floren Vineyard Community Plan is adequate and complete, as amended by the Environmental Coordinators Addendum, adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, approve the use permit, special development permit, and find the project exhibits in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Chris. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I just wanna be clear, the applicant is, remains concerned and/or opposed to having at least 15% of shelf space being dedicated to the sale or display of healthy food products?
They are not. They, my, my understanding, the applicant is on the line, is that they were questioning the condition during the Planning Commission hearing. Subsequent to that, we met with the applicant and with the, and with Public Health and discussed the condition and what qualifies as healthy foods, and my understanding, they are in agreement with the condition as written.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Could you tell me what the nature of the objections were at the commission to that condition?
The nature of the objection from the applicant?
Applicant, yeah.
Yeah, my understanding is that the applicant was concerned about just the amount of shelf space that would need to be dedicated, the fact that they had food product available at the store, and felt that it was perhaps overburdened some to them at the convenience store. However, the applicant can speak to that in greater detail about additional concerns that they may have.
Okay, I may, I may ask of the applicant, just for clarification too, and maybe this is for counsel, these two items before, this one and the subsequent one stand alone, correct? So may not in the minds of the applicant, but as far as our consideration, the fueling station is one item, the PCN request is a separate item?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. One other thing I wanna ask about, when I did my briefing yesterday, were you aware that, and maybe the applicant can speak to this, and I know we've seen in a number of parking areas, but that, I visited the site last Friday, did my own walk around the site, but that they installed canopies, I guess, I assume for solar in the parking lot, new construction is not quite, didn't look like it was quite completed, and I did ask about this relative to shading ordinance, because I noticed the landscaping, obviously, that's not gonna thrive underneath, you know, coverings, canopies that are, I assume, you know, encompass solar panels. So is planning staff, were we aware of that?
We are.
Because neither do their renderings show, their renderings don't show that, maybe they didn't know at the time, but, you know, there's no mention of that in the staff report. The parking, you know, it's not the entire parking area, it's the center portion from the existing store out to about where this aligns with the drive aisle for what's being proposed here today.
Yeah, they, they may not be referenced in the, in the project materials, but yes, planning staff is aware of the, of the solar project. We reviewed it through a design review.
So, and that's my, that's another part of my question, you anticipated, with the canopy for the fueling station, as well as with the overall architectural treatments for what's proposed here, we look to coordinate those, and so with solar panels, they have a certain utility, they'll, functionality, both from standpoint of shading, but electrical generation. But is there any requirement then for those installations to have anything that would integrate them into the overall, you know, design of the, of the site itself? I mean, you know, this is a very, it's a, it's a large site, obviously, it's a large store, very busy, but I'm curious about that. So design review looks at it, or you just say, oh, the solar panel is a solar panel, and it's?
No, we would look at it from a, a design review standpoint.
And what did we, what did we say on this one? Did you make it match colors, if there is such a thing, for the?
Typically with the, typically with a, with the solar, with the ground-mounted solar project, we would be looking more so at the landscaping and ensuring that there is, that there remains some landscaping on the side. Obviously, the trees are likely to be removed as part of the solar project, but, but typically with the actual solar infrastructure itself, it's really not much of a, of a heavy-handed design approach on the actual structure itself.
Again, maybe a footnote for future consideration, without getting over the top, obviously, you don't wanna discourage solar and, you know, what it means to, you know, energy savings and generation and so forth. Okay, I wanted to ask the applicant if I could, Madam Chair, and I know they might wanna make some presentations, but Brent, this is Supervisor Natoli, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm curious, Brent, that obviously, objection no longer stands, but that initially, and you represent Walmart, the client, objected to the allocation of space for fresh fruits and vegetables, fresh foods, and yet, at the same time, you submit a, a letter requesting the ability to, in addition to what's already provided for in your existing store, a full type 21 license, to ask for a type 20 to sell alcohol and beer. I guess I'm curious, isn't that a bit of a contrary position? You would oppose, or your client would oppose, fresh foods, but you would seek to have a letter of public convenience or necessity for alcoholic beverages for convenience sake?
Yeah, when we first saw the condition for the healthy foods, there was concern that there was not enough shelf space in the store for the normal products, because this is not a 4,000-square-foot convenience store that's akin to somewhat a bit smaller, but ?
Right, 1,600, right, right.
And so there was concern of what, what is considered healthy foods, and then in working with Public Health Department and sharing our product list, I think all the parties understand what healthy foods are and that we can meet the 15% requirement. In dealing with Public Health and their healthy foods partner, they've requested that we add some fresh fruits and peanut butter and other items into the list, which Walmart is, will do, and we can meet that 15%. We were concerned that, I guess initially, that when they mentioned healthy foods, they wanted a produce section and a whole variety, but when you really understand some of the health bars that we have and energy bars that are already there are considered healthy foods. So it was an education on the clients in our part.
Well, thank you for the explanation. So does it not include, though, some perishable, but some of your fruits that have a little longer shelf life, like bananas, apples, and oranges? Does it not include, the healthy food list include that? I'm asking this of staff.
It does.
That's correct. Okay.
It does, and we will be including those in the refrigerated cases.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for right now on this item. Thanks. Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, yes, Supervisor Frost stepped away just for a moment, so this is Vice Chair Natoli. So Brent, let me turn to you then, unless there's any other questions for staff, is the opportunity for the applicant then to speak to any portion of the item that you would choose to. So Brent, turn it over to you if you'd like to offer comments or any other matter you wanna discuss on this.
Hi, Supervisor and Chairman, members of the supervisor, thank you very much for the consideration today. As mentioned, my name is Brent McManigle, representing Walmart and the design team, my attorney, but wanted to thank staff through the many months of hard work with us and our team to refine the site plan, answer any questions, and to get us through all of the hearings, so we are here today. In looking at, I mean, we've talked about the healthy foods, and in addition, we worked with the Sheriff's Department on clarifying and getting an amendment to the conditions for the raised cashier registers, but also having to add some additional video cameras and monitors. So we are in support of the conditions and agree with them, and can answer any specific questions to be from the board.
Okay, I don't see any specific questions from the board. Thank you, Mr. McGonigal, for being here to answer questions and clarify things. I believe at this time, I'll ask the Madam Clerk if we have any public comments.
We do not.
Okay, thank you. So I'll ask our board if we have a motion for approval.
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to support this particular request for the Walmart fueling station for the Gerber at South Watt, Walmart store, with the acknowledgement of the conditions as outlined and including the environmental document and the exceptions that are asked for here relative to placement of the sign, and with the understanding that, I just would note this, that the color and architectural selections for this particular store and the pertinent structures, there's gonna be an upgrade to the, again, we're not conditioning that as a separate standing, but that's the understanding from staff, right, that there would be a?
Correct.
A refresh of the existing store. Okay, anyway, I move staff recommendation as outlined, including the environmental document.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. And I guess Supervisor Kennedy did shake his head yes. I must be getting old, I'm hard of hearing. Please vote.
He seconded it.
Unanimous vote. You have to shake your head and talk, when you have a mask, I can't see.
Gotta scratch your hoof twice.
Next item, please.
Okay, for the next item, this is the Gerber Walmart Convenience Store PCN, a request for a letter of public convenience or necessity from the Board of Supervisors to issue, to issue a type 20 off-sale beer and wine liquor license to a Walmart convenience store located at 8915 Gerber Road in the Vineyard Community.
Okay, so this is the accompanying request for a letter of public convenience or necessity for the fueling station's convenience store. The applicant is requesting a type 20 beer and wine ABC license for the 1,600-square-foot convenience store. The store's hours of operation are proposed to be from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., but the sale of alcohol would be restricted to the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. This map shows the census tract 92.01. As you can see, it's a large census tract, and it may be a little hard to make out, but there are eight active licenses in the census tract. Approval of this PCN and ABC's approval of the license would make nine active licenses in the census tract. The map on this slide shows the two licenses that are located within a one-mile radius of the subject site, including the existing type 21 license associated with the Walmart Supercenter store. The requirement for a PCN letter prior to issuance of the ABC license is due to the site being located in an area considered over-concentrated with existing licenses. The tract allows for two licenses, and as I mentioned, there are currently eight. The Vineyard CPAC considered the request and recommends approval based on a three-to-two vote. During the meeting, members noted concerns about concentration of licenses and questioned the appropriateness of a second license for Walmart in such close proximity to the Supercenter store. Since publication of this report package, staff has met with state ABC representatives to discuss the county's practice of including more restrictive conditions on licenses in regards to hours of operation, minimum size, and packaging. ABC representatives indicated they may not include these more restrictive conditions if they do not have evidence that a nexus exists between the proposed condition and the site-specific conditions. Staff has requested this position in writing from ABC and will follow up with the board once the impacts are known and options developed for board consideration. As that evaluation will likely take some time to firm up, staff did not believe it appropriate to hold up this request. Therefore, the item before you does contain the standard ABC and business license conditions associated with the PCN requests. I should note that the applicant has also indicated that they agree to these proposed In summary, staff is recommending the board approve the letter of public convenience or necessity, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Chris. Supervisor Natoli.
Thanks, Chris. I'm gonna get back to the specific request, but just on the larger item, and I know that it was shared with us, at least with me in my briefing, I trust with other members of the board, and I would just for the moment say that I find that very concerning, you know, over the course of more than two decades, we've worked, certainly as a community, working with our legal counsel, with our planning department, our business licensing department, our law enforcement officials, the sheriff's office, and others, code enforcement, to certainly, you know, allow within the realm of requests coming before this board, you know, full consideration of the, of the request and the nature of it, taking into account, obviously, the state criteria for both the number of crimes reported, as well as number of licenses allotted by statute for census areas, and to hear that in recent conversations, yet to be put in writing, that there may be some pulling back as it relates to conditions that are heard, that in, in, in most, if not all, cases are accepted by applicants, where we look for consistency relative to hours of operation, to prohibition of single sales, of certain alcoholic beverages, and a number of other items, some within the planning realm, others that the ABC threw a series of negotiations some years ago, and some members of the board currently would remember those, worked to refine that in a cooperative fashion, to be fair to applicants, respecting the role of the state in regulating the sale of alcoholic beverages. But I would just say, and this was my reaction yesterday, that if that's gonna be the case, because a few years ago, probably a decade ago now, they came forward and were, again, it was in a different position that they were taking as related to some of these, and basically, they were saying, you know, the only authority you locals have, we can accept these or not, but you can either say yes or no to it, and, and so that, at least from my perspective, as one member of this board, puts a position that if we can't reasonably expect that conditions are gonna be applied, that, you know, are trying to level a playing field, be responsive to neighborhoods, but also provide for, you know, sales to those of the proper age, you know, certainly alcoholic beverages, then you leave us very little choice, because, and if that's the position we're migrating to through some staff interpretation at the state level, I for one, and I would just say this through account executive, then I would request that ABC representatives come before this board. We've requested that in the past, we can reach out to our legislative delegation, I mean, it's state law, we recognize our proper role, council has told us over the years that, you know, we can't regulate the sale, but we can work to have conditions and work in cooperation with the state. We've taken that seriously and applied that, and again, I would just say, I'm, I'm concerned, and I don't wanna be, you know, alarming here, but if that's where we've, you know, gotten back to on this, because there's been a change in administration, a change in, in the thinking at ABC, then they need to stand before this board and for the public that we represent and tell us so, because I think it will lend itself to a, a, a serious conversation by this board as to what we do with these requests, because I know we take it seriously. Just on, on this one, I don't have a lot of questions. I would say, though, and this is probably for Brent, you may wanna respond to this, I did have a chance, as I said, visit the store and the property last week, and by my estimation, it's probably, again, I don't know the exact distance, but probably 500 feet, maybe a little, little, a little longer distance, I know it's about 30 parking spaces or so from what would be the, at least the front door of the proposed convenience market, or now approved convenience market, to front door of the, of the existing Walmart store, and then, of course, the alcoholic beverages, at least the beer and wine are in the rear of the, the food section of the store, so it's, you know, it's, it's still a bit of a walk once you get inside the store. But I guess my point being is that there's a full type 21, which allows for both distilled spirits, as well as off-sale beer and wine, there's a full section as Walmart has. spirits as well as off-sale beer and wine, there's a full section, as Walmart has, you know, very well-stocked shelves of all kinds of products, including the beers and the wines. And I guess I'm not persuaded that, from a standpoint of public convenience, that, you know, every fueling station, whether it's that of a Walmart or any other brand, necessarily needs to have alcoholic beverages as a part of their overall offerings. And here, where you have a store that's fully stocked, that has, you know, items from A to Z, and is open, you know, similar hours if not longer, in some cases, Walmarts are 24 hours, I don't know if that's changed during the COVID era here, but I guess I would say, so this is for the applicant, you may want to, again, be honest, I read your letter, but I'm not as favorably inclined on this aspect of the request. I just, I don't see it necessary that every corner where you have a fueling station or convenience store has to have multiples, and this being on basically Jason Parso, where you already have an existing 21, you have a full range of alcoholic beverages, public convenience is already served in every capacity. Yeah, if you're a motorist and you want to go get an alcoholic beverage, you may have to walk a few hundred feet to get to the front door, and then, you know, another couple hundred feet to get to the section, but the availability, it's not like there's not convenience and accessibility already, so I'll just offer that as a comment right now, board members may have other questions, but I would ask the applicant if he's so inclined, if he wants to speak to that, but I have real concerns about the request, this portion of the request.
I believe Brent McManigle is still on the line, and, oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Kennedy just wanted to speak.
Thank you, I can make this real quick. Being that this is across the street in two different ways from District Two, I have to say that I agree 100% with every comment that Supervisor Natoli just made.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy. And Brent, are you still on the line? Would you like to respond?
Yes, I am. Thank you Supervisor, it's Brent McManigle. Again, want to start out and thank staff and Sheriff's Department for working with us, and also CPAC. A little bit of background, when we started this process, we had originally requested a type 21 license, similar, the same license that the Supercenter had, but quickly realized that that was not going to gain any support with the county staff and the board, so we went back to a type 20, would have the same operating conditions as the Walmart. And the CPAC raised similar concerns and questions of why do you need a beer and wine license out at a similar location across the parking lot? And there are several reasons for that. Internal to Walmart, these are separate business entities that have to survive and flourish on their own. It's not that the fuel station is a connection to the Walmart Supercenter, but it is its own separate business entity. Many large companies have that, so there's no sharing of products between them, it's a standalone operation. And similar to all convenience stores, as Supervisor pointed out, it is commonplace nowadays for the convenience stores to not only sell a variety of products, but also beer and wine, to satisfy the traveling public and the people who are wanting to gain the products. So what Walmart's found, and I think this is similar to most convenience stores, the people who are visiting the fuel and convenience stores are often different shoppers than who are visiting the Supercenter. And they're looking for a quick grab to fill up for the weekend, for an outing, some fuel, and they just want something quick. This will not have the selection of beers, is my understanding, that it's available in the Supercenter, but it will have beer and wine. Along that similar note, people have come to recognize that they can quickly grab, go into a convenience store, whether it's a Walmart or any other convenience stores or many markets, and get some quick beer and wine, ice, snacks. So we are looking at this as any other convenience store and would like the ability to offer the same products as those, so we have the same economic advantages and competitiveness as to others. We understand the concern, however Walmart is a responsible seller of alcohol, all of the same electronic cash registers and safeguards will be in place at this convenience store. It is small, yes, it's not going to have the variety that the Supercenter does, and those who are going in for the large grocery shopping won't stop at the convenience store, but will go to the Supercenter. But again, this is really a separate business entity, and we'd ask for that consideration, that this is a separate enterprise targeting different customers who are more in the provided convenience to them. So I've been happy to expand, if there are any other questions.
I see no questions, and I'll ask our board clerk if we have any public comments on this item.
You did not have any comments.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, maybe one question that comes to mind with no public testimony, I did see that the Plan Advisor Council on a split vote supported this, it was three to two. But I guess from Mr. McGonigal's points, so what percentage, again, I understand, maybe with a little bit of blurring of the way you explained it as it relates to the business enterprises and Walmart's standards on one hand, but separate standalone business divisions, so what percentage of the business do you anticipate, again, it's not so much relevant as to this consideration, but, you know, when you put that product out there, you 're in the business, you know, this is a fueling station with a small convenience market. I mean, that's what we just approved a moment ago, was a fueling station and convenience items, and I guess I'm just curious, Brent, you know, what do you estimate? So you said it has to stand on its own, were you saying, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that, you know, albeit for selling beer and wine, this location couldn't stand alone as a fueling station with all the other items that would be sold?
Well, I think it's, from a competitive standpoint, if one realizes that they can't get their beer and wine if they're going out to the mountains or for the weekend, or coming in to replenish with a boat or something up in that area, that they would bypass this location and go to another convenience store where they can get everything they're looking for. My understanding in talking with Walmart is that the beer and wine sales are projected to be 10% to 15%. I mean, this is a newer product in California, this is the fourth one in the state that they're opening up, and I think the numbers are still going to flush out, but it's a convenience store and they're looking to be as competitive with the other convenience stores and offer the same types of products, even though it's not as large of a store, because they won't have the hot food and the prepared foods that others will have. This is more of a prepackaged supply of goods, unlikely, some of the others that have the hot meals that are available.
Okay, I appreciate your explanation, I would just say, though, to your point, I would assume that, you know, the pricing of the gasoline is going to be, you know, part of the competitive edge, and, you know, I don't know how many, you know, other locations or situated, you know, within a setting where you have a, you know, a Walmart Supercenter that has a full 21 license within a stone's throw from, you know, the area where the convenience market would be located. So I don't have any other questions, Ma'am Chair, and certainly that'd be known, I have real concerns about this, and at the appropriate time, I'm prepared to make a motion to, on this item. If there's any other comments or questions by board members, but I'm...
There are no comments or questions Supervisor Natoli.
Okay, well, with all due respect, certainly to the request, and I appreciate the work that's gone in by the representatives of Walmart, and certainly Mr. McGonigal will be on the phone today, I think in light of the concerns that at least some members of the community had registered, I appreciate the explanation about the business model, and certainly welcome is, again, in our previous action here today, you know, the fueling station with the, you know, market. I think convenience is already served in this area as it relates to alcoholic beverages, and for that reason, in my previous statements, I would move that we deny the request for a PCN. My motion.
We have a motion to deny the PCN by Supervisor Natoli, second by Supervisor Kennedy, and please vote. Oh, yeah, I think the yes, the yes was in concurrence with Supervisor Natoli, in his district.
Did you guys want to cast your votes again, and I'll display that up so that the members of the public could see that?
Okay.
So this is to deny the PCN.
Okay, and we have a motion by Supervisor Natoli, a second by Supervisor Kennedy, and please vote.
Thank you, unanimous vote.
Thank you. And that brings us to our next item.
So now you're on to the county executive comments.
No comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and do we have any board, I know we do have an adjournment by Supervisor Kennedy and Serna jointly, and I wonder if we have any board comments prior to their adjournment? Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you Chair. So one of the things that I know has been a subject of many conversations between the applicant, and I believe some or perhaps all of my colleagues in recent weeks, has been the process that's necessary to at least initiate the consideration of EIFD out at Metro Air Park, and I know staff is very well aware of that. One of the frustrations, quite frankly, that I share with the applicant team is one of process, and it's not, I don't, my criticism's not aimed at anyone in particular, but having done in a previous life what many of the applicant team are now charged with doing, which is trying to look at creative ways to finance infrastructure, but to do it in a logical way, and one with an applicable roadmap, my conclusion is that the resolution of intent that would be necessary to begin, just begin the process and have that roadmap available, is something that does not commit the county, it's not the EIFD approval in and of itself. Right now, my understanding is that there's perhaps an unwillingness or reluctance to entertain an ROI before certain economic studies are concluded, but quite frankly, I see them as very separate exercises. So what I would like to do respectfully is, in my comments, is to ask that staff come back to this board on March, at our March 23 meeting, with a resolution of intent to, for this board to consider. And if that's practically not enough time, then we can talk about other dates, but this should not be a controversial issue, this should be one that makes sense for a lot of different reasons, and so I'd like to leave that with staff.
I know we had a consultant working on a study on this, are they close to being done? Could they be done in time to bring it on the 23rd?
They're very close, very close to being done. The staff have a meeting with the consultant this week on Thursday. I don't think there's enough time to complete all of that work and then be prepared on the 23rd. If we could push that out till April, there would be a greater likelihood of being ready, even for the, just the ROI, just in terms of the staff work, I would respectfully request an April date.
As long as that April date does not slip. I don't want this to be a punt after a punt after a punt, just to get a process started, and quite frankly, with all due respect to our interim CEO, I don't see that the completion of that study having much material effect on the ROI coming to this board. So again, I think it's just a difference in perspective, difference in experience on something like this. So I'm willing to, I'm willing to consider April 6th, if it's not the 23rd, and respectfully ask that the staff bring that to this board for consideration.
I think, I'm glad you're amenable to April 6th, because I think it would help to have the information from that consultant, just, I know it would help me, but if, so since you're amenable to that, thank you.
Thank you.
And was that all that you had for now?
Yeah.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy, thanks Supervisor Serna.
Thank you very much Chair, and thank you Supervisor Serna on that, I completely agree, I think that this is a project that's in District One that has, you know, regional implications and is going to, it's just vital for the county, so thank you for that. I'd like to get a report back, just, it can be a, written to board members, just the status of where and the, how the calendar looks for the update of the housing element.
I have to check on that, I don't have the date, but we are, it's moving along.
If you could just have staff send back, just through email or something, so that I have an idea, I'm having meetings, and I just want to know where it is in the process and where it is in, as far as the outlook for dates, not exact dates, but...
General timeframes, yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Natoli.
Well, since we're adding to the workload here, and not to pile on, I've had some conversation with our CEO, Ms. Edwards, on this. Just by way of very brief history, that in late May of 2018, this board, in considering repurposing a portion of the Boys Ranch, gave the thumbs up to our Department of General Services at the time to work with, and they have worked with Sacramento Shelter Pets Alive, small nonprofit that does animal rehabilitation and some rescue, was affiliated with our shelter for a number of years, and still work within the animal community to do that. It took a while for that small nonprofit to certainly meet some of the criteria, including securing the necessary insurance, and they've worked with General Services in recent months to get a permit to enter, and I think have narrowed their proposal for a portion of the Boys Ranch. It's a large facility, as I'm sure my colleagues are aware, it's almost 200 acres and has a large campus and some outbuildings and out facilities outside of the main campus. Without getting into too much detail, they, you know, at least from their perspective, have selected a location that's somewhat self-limiting, but again, not within the main campus of the Boys Ranch. And I know that in recent weeks, certainly I've talked with Ann and Mr. Vellmaweva, Mr. Gasaway, there's been some discussion, but I guess the point being here is that the board gave approval to the recommendations at the time, which proved the concept, they did the work, this organization did their work with the surrounding community, with the ranchers, they reached out to the CPAC at the time, and talked with the adjacent property owners, and from those that responded, got a pretty favorable reaction. Again, it's a small program, and basically, our direction was, depending upon the credible business and financial stability of the organization, we directed staff to go forward and work to put together a lease, not because of the county, it just took a while, as I said, for folks to, I think, settle on the location, and they had some help from General Services. But I guess my point being today is that there is now some urgency as it relates to that program, they're very excited, they're willing to pay a modest, a round amount, that's all part of negotiations, and we're not going to negotiate it from the dais, but I guess my request is, at this juncture, that, and that we follow up, and that I'm very interested, you know, even if staff has concerns, to get that back before this board. Again, that organization, I think, would like to continue doing the good work with the animals, and it wouldn't affect the main portion of the Boys Ranch facility, but we get, I think, a very compatible and good partner with animal welfare in this community, but also would bring, you know, some activity there that we haven't had for, since closure of the facility nearly 10 years ago. So I'm just asking, again, I'm surprised you, because I mentioned to you I was going to bring this forward, I'd like to see us actively negotiate that, they're a small organization, not a lot of back and forth with, you know, they don't have an attorney and all that, so I think that they need to sit down with our folks and have a good, solid negotiations, and hopefully could bring something to this board that, you know, our staff can support, that we can support, and that would allow this program to actually move forwards. So I'll trust, I won't put a timeframe, I won't put April 6th on it, but I'd like to see it sooner than later, if at all possible. to see it sooner than later, if at all possible. Okay, thanks, thank you. That's all I have, ma'am Chair.
Thanks Supervisor Natoli, and I just want to thank you for, I know you're having some workshops on the Laura's Law, the question of Laura's Law, and I'm looking forward to bringing it back to the board. I wonder if we know when that's coming, around when that's coming? I know we have a deadline associated with it.
We do, although there is some confusion about that deadline. There was a letter from the State Department indicating that they had established a deadline. That deadline is not referenced in the legislation, so we are working to see if that is an actual deadline. If it is, we will meet it. So it will come in April if that is, if May 1st is in fact the deadline to bring it to the board, but we'll keep you posted, we should know in a matter of days.
Okay, the letter seemed like it said it was a deadline, but okay, I'm glad you're following up on it.
Yes, we are.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you Chair, sorry, forgot one more thing to our CEO, is that I understand, I found out today, that there is a bill working its way through the legislature as a 911 alternative bill. I think they're looking at 899 or something.
988.
988, okay. We may want to have that closely watched and looked at and analyzed in, you know, conjunction with, as we're coming back to the board with our own proposal, and see how that will impact it and affect it and all of that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hadn't heard about that. Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue to speak, so at this time, I'll invite Supervisor Kennedy and Serna who have an adjournment for us.
I'll start, and Supervisor Kennedy can certainly conclude here with his words. So today, we'd both like to adjourn in memory of Simon Chan. Simon Chan, founder and proprietor of Sacramento's iconic Simon's Bar and Cafe on 16th Street, passed away Sunday night at age 69 after battling COVID-19 for three months. Before the coronavirus pandemic, Simon's Bar and Grill was a popular downtown eatery and bar known for its delicious and inexpensive Chinese fare and strong cocktails. Born in China in 1951, Simon got his start in the restaurant industry working at Frank Fats', and he subsequently opened Simon's in May of 1984. Those of you that have been there know that the walls of the bar are covered in photographs of Simon posing with some of the state's most recognizable politicians, including Governors Jerry Brown, Pete Wilson, Arnold Schwarzenegger, and even Supervisor Patrick Kennedy, who stopped in for drinks into the wee hours of the morning, not necessarily Patrick Kennedy, but the legislators. After legislative sessions, so there you go. The bar was a family affair with Chan's brother John in the kitchen and Simon Jr. gradually taking the reins from his father. Simon's was one of the first Sacramento restaurants to temporarily close as the virus became recognized as a major American threat last March, and has remained closed throughout much of the pandemic. Simon is survived by his wife Amy, his brothers Johnny, Sonny, and Brian, and his son Simon Jr. And for those of you that didn't have a chance to read into Sacramento Bee, it was a story, it wasn't an obit necessarily, but it was a story about him and the restaurant. And I had a chance to share on social media my reflection on Simon and his contribution to the community and what his passing meant to me. And as someone that lived in a CADA studio apartment my senior year at Sac State back in 1991, it was the restaurant, other than Luna's, that was right across the street. And so I'd have occasion to go over and order some Chinese food on occasion, that's how I first met Simon. But I know that Supervisor Kennedy has had a long, strong bond with Simon over the years, and so I'd now invite Supervisor Kennedy to share his words.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. It's still a little raw for me, so I'm going to cut this really short. Just found out, as a lot of people did in the last couple of days, about Simon's passing. He was a good friend, great Sacramento, and a great ambassador for Sacramento. I don't think I ever saw Simon when he wasn't smiling. You know, he always had a hug. People talk about it as a great Sacramento saloon, and I would be remiss, and he would probably, you know, hit me with lightning right now if I didn't also mention the fact that he was very, very proud of his food. And, you know, it was every bit as good as where he had come from, Frank Fats'. And it was just, it was our family go-to place. I will tell one story.
Uh oh.
I will tell one story that kind of Simon, he was recovering from stomach cancer at the time, and I came in and he always had a big hug for me. Like I said, I came up and he gave me a hug and he looks down, he was taller than I am, most people are, and he looks down on me and he looks at me and he was so frightened and he says, "Oh no, you too?" Because he saw my head and thought I had cancer as well. That's Simon. He was a good man, a good friend, and he will be seriously missed. We had a party that he had scheduled for April for me that he was going to throw that we had to cancel because of COVID, and damn you COVID.
Yeah.
That's a beautiful tribute. And so I know we will adjourn in memory of Simon Chan. I wanted to briefly mention, forgot to mention previously, that we do adjourn to a closed session that the board unanimously wanted to do it with. Supervisor Natoli wasn't able to make it earlier, so we'll have our closed session afterwards. And at this time, this meeting is adjourned in memory of Simon Chan. May he rest in eternal peace.